Uh, workshop and uh, would like to welcome our new councilperson, Lynwood Branch. And uh, welcome to everybody. Okay, at this point, we're gonna get started with the managers' briefings.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we're gonna have Deborah Bryant, she's gonna come and introduce you to our federal lobbyists that recently just started their contract with the city.
Welcome, Ms. Bryant.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to see a full house again. So, it's my pleasure to introduce you to our new lobbying firm after an extensive search and uh, an RFP that we put out in the beginning of the year. In July, we chose Becker and Poliakoff, uh, DC firm, to be our federal lobbyists, and today, we have Alfonso Lopez and Anthony Bedell, who are going to let you know what we've been working on the last few months, and uh, also tell you about, we had a wonderful tour all morning this morning with Congresswoman Luria, and that went really well, too, so, there you go.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, my name's Alfonso Lopez, um, my colleague, Anthony Bedell. Um, yes, to just uh, explain, we were in uh, meetings and a tour all this morning with Elaine Luria, Congresswoman Elaine Luria, talking about transportation issues, uh, combined sewer overflow issues, and um, some issues regarding um, dredging. And uh, I had a, I think she was pretty excited about opportunities that are out there for the city. Just to give you a little bit of background about the firm, Becker and Poliakoff, we were founded in 1973. Um, fairly uh, prominent firm in several states. We combine, I think, uh, a nimbleness and an expertise. Everyone in our firm uh, is, has significant Hill experience. Um, we are a bipartisan firm, as you'll uh, will explain in a moment. An equal number of Democrats and Republicans, um, which I think is um, proven very effective for us over the years. We represent a number of large um, municipalities, including Hennepin County, uh, a number of communities in um, in Florida, as well as corporations, 3M, Hitachi, uh, organizations, associations, including the Motion Picture Association. Um, and we believe, I'm sorry, we also represent the Virginia Port Authority and uh, the Norfolk Airport Authority. And so, uh, we are growing our Virginia presence. Um, by way of background, I used to work at another firm, uh, from 2001 to 2005. Uh, I was one of the lobbyists for the city of Virginia Beach when Mayor Obendorf was here. So, um, we are, just so you're aware, we are a top-performing lobbying firm, according to Bloomberg, in DC, and one of the fastest-growing uh, federal advocacy firms in Washington DC. And this is our federal lobbying team that's focused on the work we're doing for you here in the city. Uh, myself, uh, Anthony Bedell, Omar Franco, who is the founder of our DC office, and then Amanda Wood, Clarence Williams. Amanda Wood was the legislative director for uh, a US Senator from Florida. Clarence Williams was the chief of staff for a, a member of Congress. Um, Omar Franco was um, the, I think it's important for you to know, was the uh, chair of, uh, sorry, the chief of staff for the current ranking member of T-HUD Appropriations, Transportation, Housing, Urban Development Appropriations Subcommittee in the House. Um, and so, we are able to bring, I think, some very good relationships across the board. A little bit about Anthony?
I can do, take care of myself.
Yes.
Uh, anyway, good afternoon. Basically, my background is a more executive branch. Uh, on the side of things, I worked for Secretary Elaine Chao, which was Secretary of Labor in the Bush administration, and then, as people find out, once you're on Team Chao, you're always on Team Chao. So, I came back and worked for her most recently in the US Department of Transportation, where I was Deputy Assistant Secretary for Government Affairs. And then, left, joined Becker about two years ago, uh, next month, and so, it's been a, my primary practice is obviously transportation, but also small business, financial services, and other issues that we work on. Um, so I've done about 25-plus years of government relations work. I am from Virginia. I actually went to school, Virginia Wesleyan, for two years before I transferred to VCU, so I'm very familiar with the area, still have friends here. And also have background in the state legislature, where I worked for two members of the House of Delegates and a governor. So, that's kind of my, my background and the expertise that I'm bringing to help you and the city achieve its overall policy goals.
And then, uh, myself, I also have, oh, let me just say about Anthony real quick, he was too modest to say. Um, Politico Magazine just named him one of the most important and most effective lobbyists in DC. Uh, lobbying firepower was, was uh, the, or powerhouse.
Fake news.
Fake news, right. Uh, as much as Anthony is a, is a Republican, I'm a Democrat, I've spent 25-plus years working, um, doing legislative transaction work at the federal level and at the state level. I was the assistant, uh, US, I was a US Senate staffer for several years, um, and then also the assistant administrator of the US Small Business Administration, in charge of congressional and intergovernmental affairs for SBA during the Obama administration. Before that, it's not listed, I was the head of congressional and federal affairs for all of Virginia during the uh, term of then-Governor Tim Kaine. Um, so I did a significant amount of work for the city of Virginia Beach while working for the governor's office. Before that, I also have extensive experience working for Miami County, Fairfax Water, um, and the city of Virginia Beach between 2001 and 2005. And my side full-time job is I'm the majority whip for the Virginia House of Delegates, where I um, I spend a great deal of time, and have met several of you, and at one time, shared an office wall with Rocky Holcomb.
That's exactly right.
Um, uh, next slide. So, in terms of current priorities, we were hired in July, but we've begun hitting the ground running pretty fast, working with all of our contacts and with every office in the congressional delegation, not just Elaine Luria and Tim Kaine and Mark Warner, but literally talking to every congressional office that might have some kind of impact on the regional approach to how you're doing things. Our top priority, of course, is the Comprehensive Regional Coastal Storm Risk Management Study, three-by-three-by-three, and trying to make sure that that's included in the next work plan for the Army Corps of Engineers. But, not unlike what we were talking about today with Elaine, with Congresswoman Luria, highway, intermodal bridges, transit, rail issues, infrastructure bill, reconciliation bill, stormwater resiliency, homeland security, local Oceana Headquarters issues. Looking ahead, what we want to do for the city of Virginia Beach is go beyond where you've been in terms of simply focusing on infrastructure and transportation. There is a significant amount of opportunity out there in terms of opportunity zones, DOJ, opioid museum and library funding, that you could be availing yourself of. Instead of actually doing a bond, try to go for federal money first. Instead of raising taxes, try to go for federal money first. Exhaust all opportunities before you start raising taxes with bond money. Also, we'll be working with the Army Corps on the annual work plan, harbor maintenance trust fund, uh, surface transportation reauthorization coming up, build grants, DOT grants, and National Defense Authorization Act, um, beach and water infrastructure funding, the WRTA reauthorization. All of these provide opportunities for the city to grow, develop, get it, um, get to where you want to go. For instance, back uh, the late 90s, uh, your previous lobbyist was able to secure around $110 million for beach renourishment. Now, as a part of that team, we were pretty proud of that, but that has to be the kind of thing that we're doing every couple of years. Can't be something that happens 20 years ago and doesn't happen again. We want to continually be hitting every agency that we can to find opportunities for the city of Virginia Beach, for you to achieve the goals you want to achieve, to take Virginia Beach to the next level. And then, final one, there's a number of programs under CJS, T-HUD, uh, Labor HHS, and this current infrastructure bill, where there will be opportunities for the city of Virginia Beach to um, take advantage of grant programs and appropriations pots of money that um, maybe haven't been tackled in years past, that we think might be good opportunities for the, the city to thrive with. So with that, we're happy to take any questions. It's an honor, uh, Mr. Mayor, before I end, to say that um, I feel like I'm coming home a bit uh, after learning um, to work with Mayor Obendorf and the city council, and your amazing team in the past, to now be coming back in this new firm and sort of bringing some new energy to uh, how you guys tackle what you need to accomplish here in the city.
Okay, any questions, uh, Mr. Tower?
I have.
Mr. Moss?
I have. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I yield him, I do have some questions.
Okay.
I just wanted to welcome both of you and tell you uh, how uh, excited I am about the new relationship. Renewed, renewed relationship. I'm a great admirer of yours from afar, Mr. Lopez, you've done a great job with, with the legislature. What is, let me ask this question, though. Because of your relationship with the Virginia Legislature, does that impede in any way um, working together with our state?
No, that's, uh, first off, that's a very good question, uh, Mr. Councilmember Tower. Um, I am firewalled from any work you do with the state, um, and so, you have a different office, a different group of folks who are working on those issues. My job and Anthony's job is to solely work on federal issues now, and that's where our focus is always, always going to be.
Right, I assumed as much, I just thought we ought to get that out and clear.
Right.
Again, welcome. Anything I can do to assist you guys, please let me know.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Moss?
I have uh, three questions, two for you and really one for Mr. Tuhany. What will be the medium and the frequency of the communications that you will have with this body relative to your work and representations?
I, I can tell you that we are on the phone with your amazing staff of Deborah Bryant and Alex Gottschalk on a daily, if not hourly, basis. Um, and so, uh, we are in fairly regular communication with her, and what we need to do is have one point of contact for us, so that she can be that, the crossroads for all city politics and policy and federal politics and policy.
Do you have written deliverables you provide, or are all your communications oral in nature?
We have um, a sort of a much more broad uh, contract in terms of representation, but we have um, a, a specific guidelines that are updated, like I said, on a fairly regular basis about dodging, what we have to be able to do is understand the reality of what's happening in Congress, understand what's happening from moment to moment, and then modify or change or amplify our needs and requests.
I'll direct that question to the city manager. Uh, the next question, does your scope include your daily monitoring of the Federal Register and your intervention or providing comments on proposed regulatory rules?
Um, we've been focusing our time and attention so far on uh, some of the larger funding opportunities that are available to you, and some of the uh, uh, some of the projects that have been before us and that were, were still being worked on from the beginning of this year.
The reason why I ask that, because proposed rules has tremendous reporting burden, financial consequences on localities as well as individuals. So, let me ask again, do you actually monitor that, and do you make representations on our behalf regarding input on federal proposed rules?
We have, we have not been directed to do that yet, and certainly, it's something that our firm does for other clients, so we obviously need, will need to narrow in scope of what we're looking at, since the Federal Register is a giant document, as you know. But yes, if, if directed by Deborah and the team, we can, we can monitor whatever specific issues are looking at.
Thank you very much. For Mr. Tuhany, often, there's cost, cross purposes in proposed bills specifically. If you look at a proposed bill like reconciliation, it has lots of things, but it also has lots of revenue positions, which are deleterious to our economy and some of our businesses. So I'd like to know how we reconcile the direction that you provide, or someone provides, when these bills get to the end, and someone says, "Yeah, there's lots of good stuff here, but the cost of the goodness isn't worth it." So how do we communicate saying, "Yeah, we're not into $3.5 billion, or $2 billion, or $4 billion," because of how we're paying for it? That's a different issue. So how do, how, when do we have those discussions as to what position we as a city are going to take on a holistic assessment of the bill? Obviously, our lobbyists aren't doing that, so we must be doing that internally. So how's that conversation going to happen?
Councilmember Moss, are you, are you talking specifically about when we apply for grants, or decide what grants we're going for?
No, he referred to the infrastructure bill itself and reconciliation, and reconciliation is the grant process, that's wholly a legislative process, where they come and decide how much we're going to raise and how we're going to pay for it. And how we're going to pay for it is just as instrumental in its impact as the amount of money that you may or may not receive as a result of the reconciliation package itself. So I'm wondering how we assess whether or not, how the money is raised and the impact that has on our particular economy is worth the advocacy for the reconciliation bill itself, and that's the direction that must come from you, if it's not coming from us.
Councilmember Moss, from my understanding, we don't direct our lobbyists to weigh in on that type of dialogue or deliberation. From my understanding, we don't direct our lobbyists to weigh in on those deliberations on, at Congress.
So, and so when, so I could come back, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the end-to-end of what. So when you say your, one of your priorities is reconciliation and the infrastructure bill, what would you be communicating about the city of Virginia Beach's position relative to those two legislative processes? Which deal with both fiscal policy as well as expenditures?
We monitor and identify legislation, and then provides the analysis and send it down, and then the direction of, oh, this provision or that provision. It's solely with the discretion of how the city sees what's good or bad in the bill. We don't lobby directly for or against anything on reconciliation, it's just a monitoring, because it's, as you said, good and bad is in it, and so, we want to make sure you're aware of both. And then, in the infrastructure bill, there's lots of opportunity to go after projects that will be available to the city, so it's more of a monitoring, here's what's in it, and then, you know, you can tell us if it's good or bad.
Right, and then, when, then we'll pursue those opportunities as they arrive.
So, if I deduce it correctly, you don't enter into or make any representation on policy discussions that are legislatively taking place, but after those things have been cemented and decided by the politics of the moment, you represent us how to best leverage the laws that are enacted. Is that correct? I'm just trying to make sure.
I hope so, yeah.
Because there's different kind of lobbyists. There's lobbyists who try to influence the actual construction of the bill, who pays and who gets the benefits, and then there are lobbyists who work on how to maximize and exercise legislation that's adopted. I'm just trying to understand what kind of lobbyist you are.
Well, along those lines, Mr. Moss, um, we also are trying to, as the bills are crafted, and as other bills are crafted, that might help the city of Virginia Beach, or if there are ways that we can actually influence, say, that this pot of money that would go towards this program, which then could be pursued by the city of Virginia Beach, we're trying to influence that as well. But when it comes down to sort of the more broad-based association kind of driven conversations, like the Brookings Institution or the Heritage Foundation, about whether or not um, something might be good policy, or not good policy, or good for America, or bad for America, um, our job is to deliver for the city of Virginia Beach. And so, um, I don't think those things are mutually exclusive, but we try to marshal our resources and be as effective and as, as focused as possible to, to take the, uh, the guidance of the city manager and his team, and make sure that we're trying to deliver for the city.
Mr. Manager, would it be, this is my last question, Mr. Mayor, would it be safe to assume that when you're providing that type of substantive direction, that the council would be informed that you're providing it?
Mr. uh, Mr. Mayor, the Councilmember Moss, should ever, that we ever desire to weigh in on any policy matters of the federal government, that would only come if council tells me by majority, informally or formally, that they would like for me to do that. So I will never take any position on a policy matter without informing this body, and the body giving me the appropriate guidance to move forward.
I appreciate all the helpful clarifications. I know I ask a lot of questions, but I don't like to walk away from something not understanding what I've agreed to. But thank you very much for your insightful answer. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for reassuring us that we're not being left out. Thank you.
Ms. Henley.
I have a much simpler question. Uh, you mentioned grants, and that made me, uh, my, my ears perk up right away when you mentioned that federal money, uh, because of a project that I'm very much interested in, and I didn't see that kind of thing in your list, and I want to make sure, I'm, I'm sure you're aware of it. But we have a Marsh Restoration Program for which we have a federal grant that's allowing us to do a, a design at this point, and we're certainly hoping that going forward, we'll have a lot of participation with the federal government, primarily because in Back Bay where this is, it's a lot of, of Back Bay National Wildlife Refugees and another refuge as well. So we really have to work very closely with the federal government and hope we can get a lot of participation from them on this project.
Yes.
Just want to make sure that's on your list.
It definitely is, ma'am. We actually had a, a conversation about it just a couple hours ago.
Good. And for everybody else, we have a, a great presentation this Thursday evening, between 6:00 and 7:30 at Creeds Elementary School, uh, where Dewberry is going to be presenting uh, the, the Marsh Terrace Project, so anybody that can come by for a few minutes and learn about that project. This is the, this is the first of this kind on the mid-Atlantic coast. I, I know they do it in the Gulf, but it's the first in this area. It means a lot to us, so, just so you keep that with a star beside it.
Thank you, ma'am.
We'll, we'll talk more later. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Bryant.
Uh, you mentioned the beach nourishment program from the 1990s, and that rang a bell for me. I had the privilege of representing the city in front of Congress to lobby for that, and uh, it's a great project, 50-year federal participation. Federals pay two-thirds, we pay one-third, and that was Owen Pickett's real work, and he took us around up there, and I just had to give recognition to Owen Pickett. Long after he's gone, his legacy lives on.
Yes, sir.
So thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
And, and John Warner was amazing. Uh, just, it, it should be mentioned that Mayor, uh, Mayor Obendorf and, and John Warner worked hand and glove on that as well.
They had a great team, they really did.
Yeah, Ms. Henley.
Along those lines, you know, we have the Sandbridge Beach Nourishment, and that started out with federal participation, but then the federal participation dropped by the wayside, so now it's a hundred percent local. But a couple of years ago, we actually had to have an action by Congress, and I think we do each time we do a, a, a renourishment, which we did last summer. We have to, to get special permission to be able to use our money to do this beach renourishment, so that's, that's another project that you need to, to, uh, everything seems to have a little different twist to it, particularly in Virginia Beach, but we got it all here. But, yeah, that started out with federal participation, but that's gone away for Sandbridge, anyway, five miles of beach, so we, our folks do it themselves. But we have to have permission to use their money.
Anyone else? Well, let me just say, you know, how glad we are to have you. You know, once again, we're always in competition with other cities for limited resources, and I think you bring experience, gravitas, and dare I say, a cloud factor, that I think are gonna help take us to the next level. Obviously, as we as a city stand on the threshold, you know, with offshore wind, you know, with the cables coming in, you know, the plethora of opportunities that we're gonna have, I think your roles are and, uh, abilities to, you know, bring home more bacon is gonna be, you know, really upfront, and I'm just glad that we have a real good situation here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's an honor, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, members at council, at this time, we're gonna provide your update with the 531 recovery efforts that's been going on at the city. Uh, before we get started, I think definitely want to acknowledge that this is gonna be a very heartfelt and emotional presentation, and some people may react to it in different ways, but, you know, this is something that we have to do to get through it, and also to show folks that we are putting our work forward to helping us recover and becoming a more resilient city. So with that, Melissa Ziboudas from the city manager's office will provide an update before we pass on to other members of the city.
Melissa, welcome.
Thank you. It is a pleasure to be before you all today. It's been a while. I was just talking to the mayor today. The last time I came before you was after Hurricane Matthew, so it's been some time. Um, we are so appreciative that you all are having us here today. Welcome, councilmember Branch, we're excited to have you here. So, thank you all for giving us this opportunity to come before you and update you all on the work that our awesome staff and our great partners are doing to move us towards recovery and resiliency, um, through the work that's being done with the city, and then the VB Strong Center as well. Today, we come before you with an update to give you an idea of a few key focus areas that you're all likely interested in, working towards our efforts to make our community more resilient and stronger together. As many of you know, the city manager has implemented a STAT program here in the city in order to accelerate your top priorities, and May 31st and the recovery of that event is no exception to that. As such, we're gonna address um, four areas today. The first is um, the, the permanent memorial, and then we'll touch on a couple of the other items. So, as you know, um, for the permanent memorial, we have hired, well, with your permission, we have hired Kerns &amp; West as a third-party consultant to serve as a facilitator and the family liaison to those um, on the memorial committee. Last week, you all approved an ordinance to establish the memorial committee, and both councilmember Berlucci and councilwoman Sabrina Wooton have graciously agreed to be the liaisons for that group, so thank you both very much for that. The explanation of the committee and the talent bank can be found on both the city clerk's website, and then also, which I told the mayor today might be a little easier, loveforvb.com, just click on memorial, and you'll see here, um, the applications are gonna be accepted through November 1st. If anyone has any questions, you can always direct them towards me or Emily Lubows. Okay. Sorry about that, page is sticking. Okay. So, um, first, I'd like to introduce Roseanne Foggan up to meet all of you. If you have, if you don't remember Roseanne, she is um, the coordinator of the VB Strong Center, and she's gonna talk about some of the wonderful work that's being accomplished with that group, as well as how we will continue to transition with the VB Strong Center programming as we approach the end of the federal grant terms. Welcome, Roseanne.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you so much. Thank you, Melissa, for that great introduction, and thank you all so much for your time this afternoon. Um, as we all know, our lives forever changed on 531, 2019, a moment that not only lives forever in our hearts and minds, but for so many that is relived every day. And so, part of what the VB Strong Center Recovery and Resiliency efforts include is understanding the full nature of what trauma actually means to the individuals who have both experienced it, and those that live and work around them, and what the real um, nature of this devastation really looks like. And so, at a very high level, the services that we provide at the VB Strong Center include, as you see up on the slide, case management services, which are one-to-one navigation, that is meeting with each individual to assess how they are doing in that moment in real time, and what the services are that are gonna be most helpful to them in their recovery and healing. It's really important to understand that when somebody comes to the VB Strong Center, they may not be speaking specifically about their exact experience on 531, but rather what their life looks like now in relation to their interpersonal relationships, their working relationship, their ability to provide for their family, their ability to connect with others, and the things that might have been in existence prior to that date and point in time. And so, often, the work that we do is not specifically about that day or date, but about all of the other things that are now being impacted as a result of that experience. As you can imagine, we are hearing more and more about relationships that are being tested, some that are not surviving, domestic violence that is increasing, substance abuse that is increasing, dissatisfaction or inability to continue to be a part of a productive workforce as an ongoing and daily challenge, and all of the other things that might be experienced, including anxiety, depression, sleeplessness, and lack of physical activity. Of course, we can't underscore what all of that experience, um, on top of many other things that we've experienced in the last two and a half years, how all of those things have become a complex trauma picture that our entire community is embracing and trying to work through. Psychoeducational classes and education have been one of the ways that we've also provided information to the community at large to try and help this entire community. And of course, we do talk about certainly Virginia Beach, but far beyond, as we know, our own workforce spans many different counties and cities, and even in some instances, states, as do those that were directly impacted by 531 events, not only on the East Coast, but the West Coast and in other countries. And so, the VB Strong Center, although VB is in our name, is not only a Virginia Beach initiative, it is really the community of those that were impacted by 531, 2019. One of the services that we've actually had our greatest um, connection with are our first responder services, those that rushed into the building and were there on site for the hours and times after doing the investigation, helping to clear the building, helping to take care of the wounded and the injured, taking care of the families in the hours afterwards, as horrific news and life-changing news was shared with them. Our first responder program is actually innovative in relation to what our federal grant guidelines typically provide in mass violence events. While the de-identified program allows those that are part of the first responder groups to access mental health services without working with anybody other than their immediate mental health therapist, as in this case, the park bench program is actually something that did not exist in the federal guidelines prior to, and park bench is an opportunity to provide a licensed mental health professional on-site in our first responder spaces, in their precincts, in their firehouses, in their spaces of work, to simply provide an immediate connection with somebody who may help answer some questions about what mental health services look like, what they can expect, how it might help them, and hopefully may help them, help them make a connection to those services outside of that park bench model. So we are very excited that the federal government worked with us, and that was actually at the request of our first responders here in the city of Virginia Beach. So an incredible hats off to them for their innovation and ability to see, looking into the future, what their workforces would need to, to recover in response to this. Okay, there's a clicker. Got it. All right. So of course, you don't do this work with a great playbook put in front of you. I can tell you personally, having been a part of the Centerra City of Virginia Beach partnership since September of 2019, that there was no roadmap for us, as each individual's healing journey is individual- As each individual's healing journey is individual and unique to them, so is every community's and so is every resiliency centers. And so what we have in this slide is an opportunity to share with you some of the challenges that we've experienced as we've endeavored to do this work. Certainly, the grant itself, while bountiful in many ways and very broad in who they help us to try and cover, also has limitations. And those limitations have resulted in gaps in services that people might seek to receive at the VB Strong Center, but are really going to be navigated to another point of contact in the community, such as individual mental health services, for example. COVID-19 restrictions and the ever-changing reality of COVID-19 certainly challenged us. We had just been open for about four months before we then had to move to a completely remote model. It can't be underscored that when we're doing this kind of recovery work, while we want to look at the VB Strong Centers where all of that recovery work takes place, the reality is a multidisciplinary, multi-agency attempt. It takes many partners, not only in the community, but certainly here within the city, to coordinate and rally around each individual, both from a place of duplicatable services and duplicatable application of policies and ways of working, but also things that can be individualized, that we are taking care of the individual as well as the greater whole. The need for a trauma-informed approach is something else that we've also identified and what it means to have a trauma-informed approach while also maintaining productivity and an efficient workspace. And then, of course, there is that idea that as the VB Strong Center, that all things would happen related to 531 at our center, when really our mission and our engagement is to engage the entire community in that. And so in our next slide, we really highlight those other community partners that we've endeavored over the last two and a half years to bring into this space and to do this work with us. And please know that this is a short list. It is not a full list. This is just to highlight some of those partners that have been engaged. And so you see in here, obviously, the VB Strong Center is a partnership between the city of Virginia Beach and Sentera Healthcare. That partnership continues with the Behavioral Health Access Center. We know that behavioral health, mental wellness, if you will, is a top priority for our communities on the heels of COVID, certainly, 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 as it relates to 531, 2019, and it will be for years to come. These are not experiences that heal in vacuums, and they do not heal in silos, and they do not heal at a certain point in time based on the calendar or the turn of the planner. People heal when they're ready and not until they're ready. And that's it. Hampton Roads Trauma Informed Community Network, another important partnership to us in terms of working with organizations to create a trauma-informed culture, something that we know takes a long time. We're talking about culture and culture shift and culture change, but certainly a premier leader in providing that in our, in our area. Naomi Coastal Virginia, another incredible partner, Catholic Charities, and there are many, many more. And so we want to really reinforce with you that any time and any dollars spent at the VB Strong Center are actually reinvested multiple times over in all of these other community partnerships that we know will live long beyond our individual efforts, but also continue to be here for decades and decades to come for all those individuals when they're ready to move into their healing space. And I think I'm turning it back over to Melissa at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
So one of the areas that I wanted to make sure we addressed is Roseanne talked about, excuse me, quite a few of our partners in the community that are helping us expand this work long beyond the life of the federal grant. Well, that's not to say that it's just the community partners that will be doing that. We here at the city of Virginia Beach, on the staff side and with the volunteer side, are working diligently together to try and establish some long-term partnerships and long-term programming so that we can continue this great work into the future. The, the key here is for us to build a trauma-informed and resilient community. And also, that community means a workforce that is resilient as well. So with the city staff working alongside them to ensure this transition goes as smooth as possible, the city manager's office has dedicated two FTEs living in the Office of Volunteer Resources and some additional leadership and support to continue this work right here in City Hall. The staff is tasked with seeing our processes and programs through a trauma-informed lens and helping to coordinate and addressing any unmet needs in a more collaborative and streamlined approach. I hope that you guys will continue to support the work of this team. It is something we've been saying since day one is assess and adapt. So we take our time to really look at what we're doing, address any unmet needs that are happening, and then figure out how do we change the methodologies that we're taking on in order to make it better each time. They say in the flooding world, build back better. That's the same thing when you're talking about resiliency in the human side of things. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Regina Hilliard, our Director of Human Resources, to talk about the great work being done to accomplish some of the Hilliard-Hines recommendations.
Thank you. Welcome, Regina.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. So the city uses a largely decentralized approach to human resources management, where we have liaisons in the departments that handle the day-to-day employee relations issues. And then HR works with the liaisons and the department management on any of the more complex HR issues, and we provide overall guidance to them. HR also provides policy development and implementation as well. Human Resources handles any investigations related to illegal discrimination or harassment. And we have heavy involvement in any disability management under the Americans with Disabilities Act. So we're moving towards a centralized approach to handling employee relations issues. And we're doing so in phases as we receive positions to take on these responsibilities. So most of the departments are under Phase 1, where the HR liaisons are still in play and all of the functions are as I just described. But also, under Phase 1, all workplace violence investigations are conducted by human resources. And I'll come back to that, that topic a little bit later. Under Phase 2, Human Resources handles all department investigations. Whether they border on illegal discrimination or not, HR would handle those investigations for those departments that are under Phase 2. And we would be involved in all disciplinary actions for those departments. So by way of explanation, the city policy provides that the departments can engage in any discipline that they need to for their departments. They are recommended to contact Human Resources, but they are required to contact Human Resources if they want to give discipline that exceeds 40 hours of suspension, right? Well, under Phase 2, Human Resources would already be involved with those departments. So we would already be involved in any disciplinary actions. So you'd have immediate access to Human Resources, and that should lead to more consistency in how discipline is administered. We currently have six departments that are under Phase 2. And even though it's a small number of departments, four of those six departments are large departments. So police, human services, public works, public utilities, they are included in the six that are currently under Phase 2. And therefore, over half of the employee workforce is already under Phase 2. And then Phase 3, the remaining employee relations items are handled by Human Resources, and that would include things such as individual performance management that may need to occur within the department. I am also very pleased to tell you a little bit about our, our system. Our issue reporting system is called RESPECT. And RESPECT stands for Report Employee Situations Promptly to Enable Change Together. And so RESPECT allows the employees an alternative method to get their issues known to Human Resources. So they don't have to necessarily come directly to Human Resources. They can go to this RESPECT system. They can remain anonymous if they want to. They can go to the system 24/7, whenever they, it is convenient for them to do that. Any complaints that they put into the system will then be investigated by Human Resources. Also, the employee can check on the status of their complaint. So even still remaining anonymous, they can go back into the system to see what steps have been taken on the issue that they have raised. And I said I would come back to workplace violence investigations, and I do want to do that now. Hillary Hines had recommended that we have a threat assessment team. And that threat assessment team would provide collaboration among many team members whenever we are made aware of a workplace violence, violence incident. We have had an informal threat assessment team all along, but now we have formalized this process. So we have a policy now that, that requires the use of a threat assessment team. The team is led by our, our employee relations manager, Stacya Hawkes. I wish she could be here today. She's done a great job in pulling together this team and in fact, pulling together the phased approach to the centralization. She, she will lead the threat assessment team. We will also have representatives from our Occupational Health and Safety Division of Human Resources. They would provide immediate nurse intervention if we needed it. They also have immediate access to our employee assistance program. We would have leadership of the department, whatever department is involved in the workplace violence incident, and we would have a representative from the police department just in case we needed immediate intervention and also to give us counsel as to when something is moving into the realm of criminal activity. We would also have a representative from the Office of Emergency Management on the team. And I am now going to turn this presentation over to Danielle Progen so she can give you some information about the Office of Emergency Management.
Thank you, Regina. Hey, Danielle, how you doing?
Hey, good afternoon. So the Office of Emergency Management is here today to present on the new physical security program for the city. We have recently hired a new physical security program manager, and his name is Mike Freeman. He will actually be presenting on this topic to you. I just want to quickly introduce him. Mike brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the city. He has over 37 years of specialized federal and local law enforcement experience. So please welcome me and bring you Mike to the podium.
Thank you, Danielle.
Welcome.
Hi, folks. Thank you so much for having me. I stepped into these boots for the Office of Emergency Management Security Program Management about two months ago. So I've looked forward to this moment of meeting you all face-to-face. I've seen you on TV, but it's, it's very nice. I hope you'll allow me to tell you just a tiny bit about myself, since I'm going to be working with you for many years to come, I hope. First thing you should know is my, what I believe, in fact, I told this to your police recruits. You should be very proud of the fact that 36 very bright-eyed, young people are in your police academy right now. I met them yesterday at Creed's. Fantastic, folks. Your police department is doing an excellent job of recruiting people. I told them two very important things, and it's what I believe in too and what I hope to demonstrate to you guys. First, do no harm. Second, add value. I've heard resiliency and trauma-informed lens a lot since I got here. So stepping into this arena gives me an opportunity to remain challenged, to go across our area of responsibility, our AOR, and add value while doing no harm. So just a tiny bit about me. I started as a local police officer in Knoxville, Tennessee. Go Volunteers. I'm so sorry for the Alabama fans for last weekend. Not sorry. Police officer there for 13 years, everything from corrections through patrol, through investigations, general assignment, then homicide, forensic services. And along the way, picked up an emergency medical technician, hazardous materials technician, ran the dive team, did lots of stuff. And that made me, with those technical proficiencies, attractive to the FBI. 1997, during my sixth week of new agent training, I opened an envelope that said I was coming to Norfolk, Virginia, had never been here. I called my wife, my spouse of now 27 years, and said, "We're going to a place that has lots of Navy and the dismal swamp." And she cried and cried. And yet, we moved here, unfortunately. Laskin Road, beautiful place to visit, but if a battle group is coming in, it's not a great place to have two tiny babies being awakened about every three hours when the F-14s, you know, are coming across there. So listened to some of the my friends at the Virginia Beach Police Department, and they moved us across the street. So we've been in the same house for 24 years. All four of our children have gone through Northland Elementary. I tell you that so that you know, I may not be a native, but I am a local. Gosh, I love this place. My dad moved us 13 times in four different high schools for me. I'm so proud of the fact that we moved here. FBI started out in counterintelligence and then moved to counterterrorism. And along the way, on the SWAT team, an operational medic, hazardous materials technician, evidence response team, and most recently, for the last 12 years, a special agent bomb technician. Have spent my professional career going across the US and across the world, preparing and preventing awful things from happening. Preventing things from happening, but knowing that there's always that chance, that despite our best efforts, bad things can happen. And if it does, then we're prepared to handle that. Resiliency, trauma-informed lens, boy, those are good things to lean on. So we are moving forward with that. So folks, what do I hope to do for you? There are literally seven pages of stuff that Danielle, my boss, and I have come up with in our team at the Office of Emergency Management. I started putting these things, things together, looked at my right flank and my left flank, using some army language there, and realized this is a pretty big job. Danielle, what should I do? And she said her advice was find champions, find the gems amongst the city employees. And I'm so happy to say, you know, the reason we've lived here for 24 years is because the infrastructure is so sound, because your parks and recreation are some of the best in the Commonwealth, and your cops, your police officers, your fire, your EMS are not just best in the Commonwealth, but one of the best in the US. And we're so happy to be here, so we have stayed. There have been lots of opportunities. We're happy, and I'm so proud. I told Danielle specifically, as we, we finished a meeting with Mr. DeHany, my last, my last meeting, that any opportunity to continue to contribute to the public safety of this community is a godsend. It's, it's, it's fuel for me. This is what gets me going. So what do I, what am I going to do? A number of things. We want to centralize security with oversight and planning. And what that means specifically is I'm reaching across the Virginia Beach city landscape and finding folks that are the stakeholders. And Lanell, for example, how do you get indoors? The cameras, I know Todd now, Tracy and Sarah from Lanell. The stakeholders from the various departments learn what they want and listen. Do no harm, add value, and the third big skill is to listen. So our immediate goals are to do risk assessments and gather workforce perceptions. And with that trauma-informed lens, it means moving down range at an appropriate pace with a belief that with prevention and preparation, there's always that chance something else could happen. We can't believe it won't, so let's prepare for that. But gosh, we're going to do everything we can to prevent it from happening. We're going to build our staff. So right now, sir, once again, I'm an army of one. But the Marines and Airmen and Coast Guardsmen, we love, we love them too. But I'm looking for folks to help me with that. To use a Navy metaphor, all of these projects and these plans are metaphorically a torpedo. I am loading these, and I'm pushing the go button and sending them down range. And each will need course adjustments along the way. So I want to get some help to do that as soon as possible would be great. Security incident response and reporting process, one of the things that I've seen is there is a landscape, a linear way of looking at security and law enforcement. And there is a gray area before things get to a law enforcement. We know what to do. You've got excellent, excellent police officers here in Virginia Beach. If you call them, they're on their way, no doubt. But working with Human Resources and others, we can do a lot as far as prevention and hopefully guiding individuals that might be challenged or troubled to therapy, to medication, whatever, just recognize that incident before the device is built, using some bomb tech vernacular there. The best bomb is one that we find before the dang thing is built. And that is what we've trained our public safety and what we try to do also. Other things that we're working on, physical security policies, planning, training, and exercises. So this is a, this is a step that we are working hard on. What is the most important capital within Virginia Beach? Of course, it's, it's human beings. So we're investing a lot in that. I want to do risk assessments. I want to do a number of things and get those torpedoes loaded and launched. But I've also spent a considerable amount of time meeting your personnel, meeting my fellow employees. To date, I think I have logged about 250 contacts, you know, as a member of the Office of Emergency Management, doing various trainings to include attitude or preparedness and prevention. With that trauma-informed lens, you can't just take folks and throw them into the deep end. We need to sprinkle things a bit. We need to allow people to choose, are they going to attend this training or not? And it is with that lens that I'm moving forward. I should mention that part of my efforts across this world as far as going to crises concluded, well, twenty nineteen, there've been several since then. But I think it's germane to our discussion that I I point out that that awful day, May thirty-first of twenty nineteen, you all recall those black trucks out back over in front of building two. Well, that was my friends and that was me. As a member of the evidence response team, you know, I spent eight days down range in that building, across the street from my house, basically, working to restore chaos back into some semblance of order. And I promise, I look through those lenses and I empathize with the with the beautiful folks, the lost souls that are our community. I've done it all over the damn world and, you know, here we are. Across the street from my house, Susan called me and said, have you seen the news? First time she did that was when planes hit the World Trade Center. I went up to the Pentagon and helped with that. This was the second time that she said, look at the news. And there was Chief Sovera explaining what had taken place. There's but we need to move towards preparation and prevention. And I need to get folks to think along those lines. So policies, planning, strategies and exercise. It begins with training and then it continues through. We've partnered with the OSHA folks and Scott Kalas with safety. He and Amanda have put together an updated emergency action plan, worked like fiends on it. And I was so honored, they gave me a chance to hack on it a bit and make sure that it included workplace violence considerations along with suspicious package bomb threats, those sorts of things. But getting out of a building, we need to practice that. You know, it's all words on a page unless we actually, hey, you know, tomorrow, one o'clock, we're going to do an exercise. Let's get up and we're going to move out of this building. We're going to find a place of cover and concealment. You already know what it is because we've told you. Hopefully, it's a place where there is fresh coffee, maybe across the street at New Coffee Place. And then you're going to call someone and tell them that you're okay. We got to practice that to make sure things work all right. All hazards readiness posture and public safety. You've got some specialized folks that I hope will join me as members of the security program. And we're going to partner with public safety, that is your law enforcement, fire, EMS, emergency communications and Office of Emergency Management to prepare a response if necessary. What we want to do is flood an area that's having a problem and cause a de-escalation. We need to, and there are experts and folks that can combine resources and do that. I want to gather, I'm still a member of the Joint Chairman Task Force with the FBI, still have all my clearances. And gosh, they would love to have me share pertinent intelligence and information that would result in increased situational awareness for our community. What I teach every time, every single time, the first three things I say to folks when I do an actitude or preparation or prevention response training is, first, it's better to have a plan and not need it than need a plan and not have it. And then situational awareness, knowing what's going on around you. And then survival mindset, something that we could all take a moment to consider. And I I challenge you with this, is the time to think about that when you find yourself, Army vernacular, sir, on the X where the concern is, or let's talk about it way before so that we have that plan and we can move forward. We're coming up with a security technology platform. What you see to the right there is one of the things that we hope to present to the city manager and you all, a way to empower each human that is a employee with the city of Virginia Beach with a way to tell us there's a problem by their phone. But also, and as important, they can learn there's a problem and where to go and what to do. And responders will know, we can geofence in this complex, for example, push a button and let folks know there's a problem. Remember where we planned where to go? That coffee shop? Meet us over there and then call your supervisor so that we know you're okay. These are things that we can plan and we can practice. Monitoring notifications, we are working with Jada and her wonderful team over at Emergency Communications. They are the subject matter experts. Non-emergency, three-one-one, it's already written. We're going to add some security protocols to that. Nine-one-one, you get the heavy hitters, you get the police officers to move in that direction, who will respond at an average of three to ten minutes nationally. But, you know, here in Virginia Beach, it's even a little bit better than that usually. The next slide is the why. So I can tell you, having been down range on a number of these sorts of calls, crises all over the world, your FBI, your public safety, law enforcement are pretty good at determining what happened. The the science of what took place, but the why, the why is so infuriating, isn't it? That's the variable that is difficult to address. Is it still a concern? Yeah. Statistics show and a lot of research, lots by the FBI, lots by the Department of Homeland Security. If an X in the form of chaos presents itself, it's unlikely law enforcement is going to be right there to address it. So we need to provide and empower our personnel, our staff, not only when they're at their their work site, but when they're at the Wawa or across the street at Lynn Haven Mall or down the street at Mission Barbecue. They will know what to do, they'll have a plan, they'll remain situationally aware and know what their survival mindset is already. Those couple of bullets there tell you this continues to be a concern. The last bullet gives you some actual statistics. And I don't have to read them, I I can tell you what the common denominator is. It grieves me to say this. It applies to every one of those folks that we either killed or injured. And it applies to each of you and me and Danielle and the other champions. I've found across this great city, not one of those folks knew that that was their day. Every one of them brushed their teeth or combed their hair or something and didn't know that that was their day, the crisis personified was going to sneak up behind them and tap them on the shoulder and say, today's your day. What I pray is with this new position, working for Danielle and the Office of Emergency Management, partnering with law enforcement, public safety, Jada in Communications and the other folks in Officer Marines Management and the champions throughout the city of Virginia Beach, is we prevent things from happening and we prepare folks for the option of things taking place when we don't want them to. Folks, that's all I have here, but I I would love to answer any questions.
Rosemary.
Yes ma'am.
Mike, forgive me, I didn't catch your last name.
It's Mike Freeman.
Freeman, thank you.
I skipped right to the Tennessee part, so I hope you're not an Alabama or Florida fan.
So, but we want to make sure, we want to make sure we know who you are.
Absolutely ma'am, yes.
And and I think we're very, very fortunate to have you. And also to know you've been in our wonderful city for so long and you love it like we do.
I do.
This makes me feel safer and better and, you know, we can't always stop something from happening, but we need to know how to react if it does.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
And thank you so much. Do you know what the schools are doing along?
So I'm very happy to learn. The former Chesapeake police officer friend is Christie, is over in Safe Schools, as is Bobby Hodges, a lot of you know him from former SWAT team in Virginia Beach. So we are setting up a liaison. A quick example would be that notification system. What I have known as an outsider and was kind of confirmed when I moved into the city of Virginia Beach as an employee, that there are two big entities, the school system and the city of Virginia Beach. But there are ways for us to build some bridges. And the notification system is a great example. So Bob Hodges reached out and said, you know, let's compare some notes on this. So we are working to coordinate those efforts.
I think that's that's a great idea to be working together, that notification system, to let everybody know. It's a wonderful thing and we need to know what's going on with them in these types of instances and they need to know what's going on with us.
Absolutely, yes ma'am.
That's a grand idea. Thank you so much for for being part of the Virginia Beach team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Moss?
I just had two observations. One is I, right on with exercises. I remember hearing the interview of the gentleman who was the security consultant for Goldman Sachs. And out of all their employees, they only lost four. You probably know the story. They did tremendous number of exercises. When the time came, they didn't hang around to turn off their computer, grab their keys, do all the things that habit thinks to do. They just got up and left.
Yeah.
Because that's their training. So really, exercises are key to get muscle memory and mental memory, not the panic. So I applaud you on that exercise insight because that is the key to success.
Thank you, sir. I hope, I believe so too.
And I had a observation relative to the human resources pitch. I hope that in phase two or in phase three, that we've made supervision and supervisory a much more holistic and critical element of performance by our supervisors. And it's tied into what your cultural alignment plans are, Mr. Manager. I'm sure that's the case, but I I hope that's true. And if I if I could get a copy, maybe other would like, I'd like to see this formal policy on the threat assessment team. I'd like to read that. I'm a reader.
Absolutely.
I'd appreciate that and thank you very much. I I am really encouraged by the things I heard you say.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, anyone else at this point? I just want to say thank you, Mr. Wolf.
I just said wow.
Okay. Now, I'll tell you what, I I am, yes.
Excuse me.
Mr. Tower.
Can I just make one comment, one question? One, I wanted to welcome, welcome you.
Thank you, sir.
Your background seems extremely relevant and you've covered a, I can't, I'm trying to think of of an emergency you haven't haven't covered. So we're happy to have you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm I'm just curious, I want to have some other discussions about our new city hall.
Yes.
Building. Have you been actively involved in in the security decisions yet with regard that those premises in particular, the where the city council will be meeting in that?
Michael, I'll start. Yes, Councilmember Tower, that's one of the things that we tasked him in his first hundred, hundred ten, hundred twenty days to look into is get a feel for the new city hall and then come up with a plan and how we can be more proactive as it relates to how we will secure the site, secure the council meetings and protect the staff. You know, so that's one of the things that he's working to build out right now. And as as we get closer to that move-in date, probably towards the end of the year, beginning of the year, beginning of next year, we'll sit down and brief the council on a thorough.
Great, I I wasn't looking for a briefing so much as just exactly what you said, Mr. City Manager, thanks. Welcome again.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mike, welcome and most welcome. And I just want to say the overall presentation from the different factions that are coming together, this is a very complex problem. Virginia Beach is not unique to the problems that are out there. This is going on throughout the country. It's going on throughout the world, but I'm glad to see that we are doing something that's very proactive and, you know, especially with the resiliency. In my discussion with some of the other mayors, my counterpart in Orlando, Buddy Dyer, really emphasized that one, he says, if you learn one thing, this is not going to be a quick fix, that this is going to go on for a long time. You know, they had a significant mass shooting down there with, you know, significant casualties, but I think, you know, maybe a couple thousand people that were present at the time. And they didn't realize how long, you know, the you know, the care would have to go on. Because I think it was brought out brilliantly, everybody heals at a different rate. And but I think the fact that we're looking at this thing holistically and from many, many different versions about what it's going to take and the pieces and putting it together. And then we have, we're actually moving forward also with the memorial fund to, you know, there will never be total closure and we will always continue to embrace all of our people who adversely affected in perpetuity. But I think it would also give great, you know, comfort to our employees, but also the community at large to let you know these proactive steps we're taking that also may be applicable in the workforce that is out there too. So I think in that regard, it would be helpful. But to everyone who presented today, thank you. God bless you for your efforts and, you know, this is going to be a continued work in progress. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dehaney.
Mr. Mayor, the next presentation is at the request of council. Council acts for a better sense of our organizational vacancies and also the challenges and the impacts that are impacting the city and our operations departments. We are, the presentation is going to be kicked off by Regina Hilliard, our HR Director. Then after that, we have several departments that are going to come by and talk about some of the challenges and the impacts that they're faced with and some of the things that they're doing to ensure that services are being delivered. These things should not be too new. There's some of these things we already covered in the previous budget to give council an update. And then after that, we'll talk about the things that we are doing and some of the things that we're working on for ultimately for council consideration as we move forward with addressing our vacancy issues.
So, good afternoon again. So we have all heard that there is a shortage of workers to fill positions. And according to the manpower group, this shortage is occurring around the world with sixty-nine percent of employers globally finding it difficult to hire employees that they need. The Pew Research Center shows that the worker shortage in the United States is real as well. It states that we had eight and a half million fewer workers in February of twenty-twenty-one than we did in the prior year at that same time. And then Virginia Business speaks to the labor shortage in our state. And they say that businesses are being forced to cut back on hours as well as on the services they provide due to, again, a lack of workers. So it it makes sense then that we're filling the worker shortage here, right here in our own city. So we wanted you to see what the vacancies look like for our city positions. So this graph shows the budgeted city positions and the percentage of full-time vacancies as of September twenty-seventh. Our part-time vacancies are not represented up here, but they have a very real impact for the departments that rely on part-time workers, such as in our Department of Parks and Recreation. But this is, again, just the full-time positions. And as you can see to the right of that graph, most of our vacancies, the vacancies show twelve percent and that represents eight-hundred-and-forty-two vacancies. Most of our vacancies are in some stage of the recruitment process. But despite that, we're showing the highest percentage of vacancies that we have seen over the preceding three years. We also have to keep in mind that a good number of our employees are going to be eligible for service retirements. And service retirements will impact our vacancies as well. As of September of this year, we have already had a hundred-and-sixty-four retirements. And by the end of this calendar year, we will still have another three-hundred-and-sixty-five employees who are eligible for service retirement. July and the end of the year, December, really January one, those are the months where we have the highest number of retirements. So we still should expect another large group of retirements to occur this year. I'm hoping that the difficulty we're having in filling vacancies will be evident on this slide. This is showing the years of twenty-nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. These are calendar years. From March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty through around mid-May of twenty-one, we were under a hiring freeze. So you would expect to see a lower number of requisitions or jobs advertised during twenty-twenty. Though it looks like we're going to be close to the twenty-nineteen numbers in twenty-twenty-one by the time twenty-one ends. But because the number of jobs advertised varies, you'd expect to see a variation in the number of applications we receive as well. But what is telling on this slide is the number of applications we receive per job advertised. So in twenty-nineteen, you can see that we were receiving on average around thirty-seven applications for each one of the jobs that we advertised. And twenty-twenty, that dropped to twenty-six applicants per position. And so far this year, we are at twenty-three. So we have declined again in the number of applications we're receiving for each one of our positions. We are experiencing difficulty in filling positions across the board, but nationally and and here, we are especially having difficulties when it comes to infrastructure types of positions, those in the medical field and some of those in in some of the public safety areas. Now, our police chief recently came before you and spoke about some of the vacancies that he had in his department. that he had in his department, uh, so he will not be joining us today, but we do want you to hear from some of the other departments to hear about some of the challenges they've, they're having with filling positions and some of the things that they're putting into place to help meet this challenge. So the first one, uh, that you will hear from is Tom Green from EMS.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, before Tom starts his presentation, Deputy Chief Tom Green. Chief Brazel asked me to, um, express his apologies for not being here. His flight got canceled because his Southwest flight didn't have enough staff to take off.
He might get back next week.
I think they're having, I think they have plenty of staff. I think they have unionized.
He's actually took American and just landed, but he can't make it. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Appreciate it.
I was going to say he could be on extended leave for a long time.
Could be, could be. Afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, Deputy Chief Tom Green. I'm going to try and stick to, to Chief Brazel's remarks as closely as I can. He's worked pretty hard on this, uh, to discuss the, uh, situation that we face in EMS, which is, um, um, not an easy task. We're a little bit different than every other department that we rely on a large volunteer workforce. And that's, uh, it's been a little tough with COVID, so we'll go over briefly what we've, what we've done. Right now in our department of the top line there, we only have, uh, three vacancies. Uh, it's going up to four. We haven't had a lot of problems, uh, hiring. Our, our hiring process has been pretty quick turnaround time, but what we're seeing nationally and actually locally is that we're not getting the amount of applicants that we used to have, especially at the paramedic level, which those are hired from. We were just down, uh, some folks down in a conference in Atlanta and some of those folks down there are running almost forty percent short on the advanced life support providers. So that's a little bit difficult, but we're managing there. And our turnover remains much better than it does on a national level. I think that's a testament to the system we run here, um, with our EMS system and that's, that's good news. I think, uh, what we're looking for in the future is to expand out to a little bit lower level, level of certification from a paramedic to an advanced provider, which bridges, the bridges the gap. Uh, there's a lot more pool of candidates in that area and they provide good care as well, so we're, we're looking to do that. I do want to point out though, on the career positions, they were never intended to really staff ambulances. They were to support the volunteer system, uh, to provide advanced life support in our quick response vehicles. Right now, we've transitioned them to help fill the gaps to a more broader ambulance filling role. So, um, that has some downhill consequences to that, um, in that we use more of our firefighters that are paramedics off of engines to transport patients to the hospital, um, but it is a stopgap measure and is working very well with our partners at this point. The, uh, we normally don't talk about the volunteer side as being vacancies, but we have to look at it in a little bit different light. Chief Brazel noted in the budget presentation last April that we sort of need to change the narrative and how we look at volunteer, both recruitment and staffing of our ambulances, which is extremely important to us and to the city. Uh, we value them tremendously. So the lower chart provides, uh, the ideal number of volunteers necessary to staff a targeted number of ambulances. Uh, it's just a model because, uh, volunteers don't work every Tuesday or every Wednesday. We may have a lot of folks coming in on a Friday night and not as many on a Sunday afternoon. So it's very fluid on how you staff with volunteers and it is a challenge, but it's worked well for a number of years. Uh, this is, assumes that everybody is available twenty-four seven, as I just mentioned, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days and as you can see, we're just over the eight ambulance mark currently on that top line today. There are a number of factors that have contributed to the decline over the last, uh, few years. We could probably do an entire presentation on, on recruitment and retention of volunteers, but one of the things that's hurt us pretty bad is obviously COVID. Um, it's hard to recruit folks into a medical field under those sorts of circumstances. We do a lot of military volunteers and they've been told to stand down, obviously, that they can't volunteer. Also, we've been restricted by the state on the number of students that we can put into a class by a third and that is significant because it takes us almost nine months to a year to recruit a volunteer, train them, get them ready for the field and have them functioning on their own. So it's a very difficult task to do. Even with the creative use of existing personnel, we're staffing an average of one-point-five fewer ambulances than we did just last year and that's significant. Again, some days are far lower than that. Some days can be, you know, usually your Fridays, Saturdays, weekends, when people have free time, we usually have better staffing. Even before that, we were falling short of our ideal staffing levels. As you can see in years, uh, our historical peak in two thousand thirteen, we had up to five hundred and sixty-two people. Coincidentally, that coincided with the recession that we were having at the time and we tended to get a lot more volunteers and looking for, for better career choices or a different career path, let's say. So today, what that results in is having eight ambulance crews, um, from the volunteer side is we are put into a call holding situation. So when dispatch dispatches a call, we will triage the importance of the call, the severity, and some calls will remain hold, in a holding queue until we can get an ambulance free to pick the calls up. Hopefully it's not as long as, you know, some cities that we've run into are up to an hour to two hours of a delay, sometimes three to get an ambulance to a location. We're doing far better than that, so we're pretty proud of that. We have a very nimble workforce and it seems to work for us. Night members though, that volunteer at night are particularly getting hit hard and that's where we tend to lose people is because nighttime, they want to get off to go to their job the next morning, so when they're that busy at night, it's very difficult to retain them. So what are we doing to address the situation? For the short term, uh, short term, we've shifted, um, most of our career medics from the quick response vehicles over to staff the transport units, the ambulances. Again, it's a temporary help, uh, but it shifts an inordinate burden back onto the fire department and their providers to have to come off an engine company to transport to the hospital. We're very keen on Chief Hutchinson's, uh, ability to keep engines in service and ready for fire calls, accidents and so forth. Neither of our departments were really resourced to operate this way. We also call upon mutual aid quite a bit, um, and that's worked well. It's a stopgap measure, especially Navy Regional. Uh, we tend to tap Navy Regional quite a bit to handle the call service that we can't get to or that may put a call in holding. Um, that's just not a sustainable solution. They're happy to do it. We work with them every day seamlessly, um, from response to special events and many other situations. We're more aggressive with calling, uh, commercial ambulance services, um, some of the private ambulance services out there that will service a nursing home call or a medical facility or help us out. Again, they're running calls during the data dialysis centers, so it's not a consistent, um, resource for us. For the long term, um, we need to invest in our volunteer service and, and up that ante. They, they've not failed at all. They're providing what they can provide under the circumstances with COVID and so forth, so we don't see it in those terms one bit. In fact, um, the Virginia Beach Rescue Squad Foundation has just doubled down their efforts to, uh, do some rebranding and marketing, um, and they're getting ready to embark on a major marketing campaign to attract volunteers, uh, to the system. We're optimistic that this will be, uh, you know, pretty well received and we should get some more applicants, but again, that's six to nine month process to get them in the field and trained and the one-third that we're allowed to train at this point is, is a little bit difficult, but we'll work through it. We would, if you looked at the previous slide and I, we can go back, it would still take us to get to where we think we're comfortable at a hundred, uh, at fourteen ambulances, approximately a hundred volunteers. That's trained and on the street and retain the ones we have. So that's, that's a, a momentous climb, but we're in for the fight there. Volunteer recruitment alone, unfortunately, as far as we can tell, will not sustain it. The, the numbers just don't bear out. But we are steadfastly working with the foundation and trying to do these promotions to get folks in. That's our lifeblood. And so far, the volunteer system has stained, uh, sustained relatively, uh, plateaued and it's doing well. They're coming to work every day, they're enjoying it, but as call volume goes up, the stress goes up, so we're, we're definitely working on our retention efforts. Uh, we cleared, clearly need to increase the number of career medics alongside our volunteers. Uh, there's simply no way to deploy the number of crews necessary without more medics. Um, and that's pretty borne out by the data. Uh, we've moved, uh, we proved in two thousand four and we continue to prove that infusing volunteer services with career members has been a good thing. It's not been a bad thing. We've had meetings with the entire volunteer leadership and they've come to that conclusion and support that as well. Failure to add career staff, uh, to meet not only the current, but increasing demands for the future will lead to even longer response times, which we're very concerned about, um, especially for your higher acuity calls and adding staff appears to us to be the way forward at this point. Uh, we'll be working with the city manager as part of an upcoming budget process and we appreciate that, sir, to, to do that and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, any questions? Ms. Henley?
We want to go, sir, um, you can do it now if you want to, but we want to go to the end because we've got a couple other departments.
Okay.
It's your call, man.
Okay, if we can, uh, you know, we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll call, we'll have questions after.
But we're not going to cut our questions short, correct?
No.
All right, very good.
I wrote mine down.
Can somebody advance the next slide? I think it's ECCS.
Yeah. I don't think so.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Good afternoon. My name is Jada Lee and I am the new Director for Emergency Communications and Citizen Services since June of this year. Um, I am a longtime employee of the city for the past twenty-nine years, um, and I have worked in every position available in the nine-one-one center here in Virginia Beach. So, um, I am very familiar with nine-one-one, how it works, what our pitfalls are and, um, I'm here today to talk to you about our vacancies, but also to talk to you about the areas where we are trying to make improvements, um, to get our vacancy numbers down and to retain the employees that we do have. Oh, somebody already did a clicker for me. Thank you. So some of the key points and service impacts that we've had recently, um, are from, um, our vacancies, right? So ECCS has seen an increase in call volume since some of the restrictions for COVID have been lifted. When we were under the COVID restrictions, we did see a decrease in our daily call volumes, which, um, helped based on our vacancy rate. But what I do want to tell you all today is that currently our average answer time for emergency, for the emergency lines is sixteen seconds and that is even with our current vacancy rate. So the men and women of Virginia Beach nine-one-one are doing an amazing job handling the business that they're faced with day in and day out, even with, um, our current vacancy standards. So application, our application numbers are down from previous years. Just to give you an idea, um, in twenty nineteen, we would receive an average of a hundred-and-ninety-five applications released to our department from HR. Between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, that number now is seventy-five or less. Um, when we recently had a requisition out, we only received sixty-three applications, um, from human resources. So we are working diligently to attract and retain quality applicants even during the pandemic. But again, what we have noted is the decrease in the number of applications being received and it takes us about two hundred applications to hire ten people with all of the background checks and the testing and all that they have to go through. But this is not unique to just to Virginia Beach. This is across the state and across the country. Dispatch centers are struggling to recruit and retain qualified candidates. The stress of the job and the long hours are oftentimes not as attractive to potential candidates. So what does that mean? So I can tell you when I started twenty-nine years ago, we were on a DOS computer. It was a, one computer screen and a stationary keyboard. The dispatch center now has eight twenty-three inch, I'm sorry, thirty-two inch monitors and they have two keyboards that they use. So it's ever-changing. This industry is ever-changing the roles and responsibilities and it's just going to continue to increase. So we are currently working with media and communications along with, uh, human resources, staffing and compensation to develop a recruitment campaign to attract a target audience that would want to come and give back to their community and work in the nine-one-one field. We've had some difficulty reaching our industry standard. The industry standard today is to answer ninety percent of your nine-one-one calls in ten seconds and as I just told you, our average is sixteen seconds, so we're about six seconds off from the industry standard today. And then of course, the greater potential for call delay. When you don't have sufficient staffing, then calls will go into queue and we've, we've seen that happen. So what are some of the things that we're doing to address, um, these, these vacancies in nine-one-one? Again, I've already mentioned that we're working with media and communications on a recruitment, um, campaign to try and recruit people to want to come in and work with us. And also, we were, in twenty twenty, we were only able to hold one academy and that was due to the restrictions of social distancing during the pandemic. So that kind of slowed down our momentum a little bit. So what we've done is we have streamlined our onboarding processes. We have changed some of the previous requirements to be hired as a nine-one-one dispatcher because historically, we have been following the police department's hiring processes, right? So we have looked across our, um, industry and we realized that a lot of the things we were doing really weren't yielding us any value, um, so we are making some of those changes and we're hoping that this is going to help to bring in the people that we believe to be a good fit for this position. We've also been able to work with human resources to reclassify, um, twelve of our current public safety emergency telecommunicator positions to public safety emergency call-takers. And what that means is these individuals, their entire day will be answering calls for service, answering those nine-one-one emergency calls for service because right now, we have some dedicated call-takers, but our police dispatchers, fire dispatchers are also answering those nine-one-one calls to make sure that they don't go into the queue. So we want to have that, um, skillset of just a call-taker. And I don't mean that as just a call-taker because what they do is vitally important. Um, and then we're also undergoing a study. It's going to be through one of our, um, trade organizations called APOC. It's the Association of Public Safety Communications Officers. They have a staffing study that they offer so that we make sure that we are appropriately staffed according to industry standards. And, um, the last bullet there is cross-training of our three-one-one call-takers. So since I took over as the director and just before, uh, Mr. Williams, the previous director, left his position, we had started transitioning some of the non-emergency, uh, nature codes over to three-one-one. So currently, there are some specific call types that they can handle, one being nuisance calls, uh, the other being animal control calls. We get a lot of animal control calls that our nine-one-one staff were handling, um, and they are also handling firework calls. I can tell you right now, on July fourth at nine o'clock, at twenty-one hundred on the dot, that screen blows up because everybody's setting off their fireworks, right? So we've been able to transition that. But one of the other really big processes that nine-one-one handled that we have moved over to three-one-one is the residential parking permit, um, function that happens in the summertime at the oceanfront. That is a very labor-intensive process and due to that, we were having to tie up nine-one-one personnel to handle those, that task. So we have moved that over and not to mention the fact they're also handling the short-term rentals after hours for complaints of, in that nature. So it's been, um, a wa, a, a big load lifted off of the nine-one-one staff to transition those calls to three-one-one. The other thing that I'm planning, um, is once we have, um, filled some of our nine-one-one vacancies, we're going to actually start training the three-one-one staff to take on more of the non-emergency type calls so that they are able to, the nine-one-one staff is then able to focus on the nine-one-one calls and not the three-eight-five-five-thousand calls because we take a little over four-hundred thousand calls a year and we actually take more non-emergency calls, the three-eight-five-five-thousand, than we do nine-one-one calls. I don't know if you all were aware of that or not. And in closing, um, bullet number two, the implementation of recruitment and retention bonuses. And in closing, bullet number two, the implementation of recruitment and retention bonuses. I would really like to thank Council and Mr. Mayor for providing ECCS with the funding to implement the recruitment and retention bonuses. This has gone very far with our 911 staff, and the recognition from city leadership is so vitally important to the dedicated men and women of Virginia Beach 911 and the job that they do every day. So thank you.
And thank you for the job that you do. And Council members, if you ever get a chance, take a tour. You will be impressed with the professionalism and just the, just the positive attitude that you have there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jada, take your mask.
Thank you.
Jada, take your mask.
Hey, how you doing?
Good, good. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Okay, so Human Services. What I want to do is give you a little bit of context to these percentages, because they just look like percentages, and you need to know what the number is. So 19% equates to 224 full-time positions that are vacant in the Department of Human Services. The part-time number is 58 of 131, and the contract number is 174 vacant of 294. So about a third of the workforce is vacant. So what happens when a department has that many vacancies? Well, the people who are there are lifting it up. And I cannot say enough to you about this remarkable staff that we have in Virginia Beach, working in Human Services but also across the city. During this time where we have these vacancies, the people that are remaining, the non-exempt are getting overtime, the exempt are working way more than 40 hours. So hats off to them. I tell them all the time how much you appreciate them. I tell them how much Mr. Duhany appreciates them and our Deputy City Manager as well. They need to hear it, and I do say it often because they're really lifting up a lot right now. So what happens also when you don't have enough staff to potentially run fully every program that you want to, is sometimes you have to reduce your capacity or not take as many admissions. So we had to do that in our crisis program pathways at Burdena a couple weeks ago. We still had clients in the program, but we were not able to take admissions for about a week. In our ICFs, we're really slowing up on taking admissions, and some of our programs have remained at a lower capacity. So day programs would be about 30% capacity. We were hoping to have them at 50 or 75% by this time, but of course, COVID, we took them down to that capacity of a lower, of a lower rate. But we have not brought them back up at this time. So you also have to consider the closure of certain programs, but right now, we're putting that on pause, and we're trying to stay status quo and be able to do all the services that we have provided. We just may, as I'm saying to you, not be taking a lot of admissions in some of these programs. We have had an extreme amount of difficulty recruiting and retaining staff to meet some of our, you know, state-required services such as emergency services. In emergency services, we have about a 50% rate of vacancy there. So those staff who are exempt, all of them, are really doing a lot of different shifts. It's a 24/7 program, so they're covering everything right now, and they're doing a wonderful job at it. So what are we doing to address this? Some of the things, I'm sorry, should I be pressing something here? There we go. So some of the things that we are doing is hiring bonuses. We have started a new program, literally, we're starting it this week, where certain key positions will have a hiring bonus for that position. We worked with HR as well as our city leadership on this. So positions such as eligibility workers, family services workers, clinicians, our doctors, our nurses, these type of positions, we're looking at what's kind of the industry doing and what do we think we can do per policy, and that's what we're implementing. So now, when you see an advertisement for Human Services, you will see that there's a hiring bonus attached to that. We're putting that out this week. The other thing that we have done is some retention bonuses for some key positions. Just this week, we did do retention bonuses for the emergency services staff. We're also looking at, is there another way we can do some other bonuses for the people who have not had the ability to telework and have really lifted us up over this time? So I'll be looking at that through my budget process as well. Another thing we would like to do is change the shift differential compensation for some of the staff in the 24/7 programs in key areas, but also in looking at that, part of that is in city code. So we can't just go implement something that's in city code and change it. So HR has been looking at that with us, and they're looking at how they might adapt that, bring it to you, to see if you approve some of the changes. So I'll give you an example. Right now, shift differential is 3 PM to 3 AM. So if you're working at 4 AM, you're not in shift differential. That, to me, seems like we might want to think about doing a evening into the full night, taking the full night into account, which would be maybe 6:00 or 7:00 AM, the shift differential changes. Also, if you're an exempt staff and you've had to shift over and do evenings when you usually work day shift, but that wasn't your intended shift, so you weren't hired onto evenings, you're not getting shift differential. So these are some of the changes that we would like to see made, and those are things that we'll work with HR on. Finally, utilization of an alternate recruitment advertising method. So we've done everything that's inexpensive. You know, we're putting it on our website, we're putting it on Facebook, we're doing all of that. But at this point, if we want to do a little something more, a little bit big of our lift, we really need to do that, I think, more so as a city, so that when we do it with HR, the city's advertising is out there. So, you know, Jada was talking about it, maybe link on with what she's doing, say, we also have these positions to advertise in Human Services. Okay?
Oh, thank you. That was a remarkable effort your entire organization did through COVID, which really stressed you folks out. Hey, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good afternoon. I just wanted to be respectful of your time, but I would like to take a little bit of time to tell you about the specific needs of Public Works and where we are in the staffing circumstances. As you're all aware, we've seen an increased amount of funding coming from federal sources through the ARPA, CARES Act, possibly Infrastructure Bill, and all of these, all of these funding sources are great. They're a boon to us, but they're a boon to everybody else. And that creates an incredible competition, and that's what we're, that's what we're seeing in our marketplace. We have historically had some issues with elements of design engineers, trying to have design engineers here who can help us work through the process even prior to the pandemic, but the pandemic has only made it worse. So most, our most difficult-to-fill positions, we see in trades and in engineering in the Public Works Department. We're talking about electricians, mechanics, inspectors, and of course, engineers. Now, ideally, in a scenario like this, when we're having difficulty trying to fill these positions, we would try to subcontract. But the challenge that we're finding is that most of the contractors that we're working with are facing their own challenges. Additionally, if we start talking about subcontracting out projects, somebody has to oversee that contract, and so we still have to have staff available to do that. And so I just wanted to make sure that the City Council's aware of that. Now, I have come before this body and talked to you about our ability to carry out ARPA, and I believe that we can still do that. I have, I have discussed with many members our ability to meet the requirements of the bond referendum, and I still believe that we're able to do that. But it would be irresponsible of me not to stand here today and tell you that we are experiencing some shortages, and we're going to have some trials and some trying times ahead of us. So I do want to make sure that I'm being very clear in my messaging. Public Works is still able to fulfill our mission, but we do have some trying times, and there's going to be some challenges ahead of us. And one of those, one of those trying things is that we have over 120 staff members that are able to retire at the end of this year. That's based solely on age. If we look at their age and their level of service, that number drops to about 85, but that's still a sizable number. And most of those are senior-level people, talking about, again, project managers, people that are responsible for managing programs and that type of thing. The end result ultimately will be that we're going to have, you know, we're going to have to contend with the possibility for project delays and increased costs to our projects. And I didn't want to leave you on a negative note, so I would like to point out some areas that we're doing inside of Public Works ourself. Director Hilliard is going to talk to you about some areas that we're working on as a city, and a lot of those things are going to carry across the Department of Public Works. But one thing that's unique to the Department of Public Works, and this is actually something that was initiated by our staff in the refuse department. They recognize the need to have more drivers, more skilled drivers. They recognize that we are having a challenging time filling those. They worked through their own leadership to develop an apprenticeship program. And at this point, we have had three classes graduate through the apprenticeship program with a total of 20, 28, excuse me, 26 graduates. And of those 26 graduates, 24 remain with the city, and I think that's, that's exceptional. The big concern was, would we train them, and then would they leave? And that hasn't been the case. They put some good protocols in place. We usually have folks come in, work on the back of a truck, work in coordination with the other operating staff to be eligible to go through the apprenticeship program. Once they go through the apprenticeship program, they've been with the, with the organization for a little bit. And, and I really, I can't stress enough, this was done by the staff. This was, this was not something that I came up with or City Manager or HR. This was something that the staff came up with, and so I really want to give a tremendous shout out to my staff for coming up with that.
Thank you very much. Hey, Bobby, how you doing?
Good, sir. I'm here with members of Council. As far as planning and what key points and service impacts that we've had, as similar as LJ's issues in Public Works with hiring engineers and other manpower, we're just, we're just competing with the market right now. And we're having trouble hiring engineers. As Regina had mentioned earlier, we are posting multiple times for each of our positions to try to find qualified applicants that we can at least just interview, and many times, we have many people drop out of the interview process. So we do have a number of vacancies that have just been opened because we're trying to fill the furthest ones out that we can hire one, but then the other one still just kind of floats around as we continue to try to fill positions. In order to fill those gaps for the planners, engineers, inspectors, and even our customer service folks, our, our planning aides that are answering the phones, we are doing the best we can in order to have them manage that time. We were definitely highly hit in the zoning division as well to try to keep up with our short-term rental program as well as just regular plan reviews, and so we've had to do overtime to have people try to keep up, of course. As far as, since 2019, we've had significant key leadership and supervisory positions turnover. Now with that, we've had an opportunity to promote those that have been performers in the, in the department, but then we still have the issue of backfilling those positions with folks. So we, we do get, at least get to promote those that, that have done a good job for the city and, but then still run into the issue of trying to backfill their The concern that we really have now is that we're going to have an increased time for site plan reviews and building permit plan reviews. Right now, our building permit plan review team is down to one permit plan reviewer who also has to work the counter at this time, and we have one supervisor. It's not sustainable for our staff at this point. We just had one of the, his counterpart, we have, we have four, let me see, we have four positions that would man that counter or work doing that, and we're, we're just down. We're just down to one person doing it. It will impact our review times. Our civil engineer site plan review team has been cut in half with those, with two of those positions or those folks transferring to do project management in LJ's group, as well as two of those just leaving the city in general. So we're having trouble keeping up, and it will impact our site plan review times. I will say, and echoing what Eileen said about the city staff that are staying, they're, they are dedicated staff members. They are working very hard to try to keep up. They understand what's in front of them, and they know that the pile doesn't go away, right? And so they're trying their best to continue to move forward, but it's not sustainable. Our staff is really having a hard time. So impacting, potential impacts that we could have due to our understaffing could be that we're, we're looking at additional ways to try to ease the burden off them, which could include closing down the permit counter in order to allow people just to do plan review and not work with the public, still taking in appointments, and also potentially looking at expanding teleworking just to try to find some relief so that they can just sit and focus. Those are things that are on the table, not anything that's being implemented, but is of concern, especially as at this moment, we are down, again, like I said, to one building permit plan reviewer that is working the counter and working with the public. But again, I don't want to leave with just that. It is a reality, especially as I've had, I will be honest with the Council, we've just had the entire short-term rental team get hired away to Chesapeake, and we've had other significant issues dealing with that. But the staff that is staying is, is dedicated to the city and is working very hard, and I, and I can't emphasize that enough to our staff of how hard they're working to keep up, but it is unsustainable at the moment. So we are trying to figure out ways to continue to retain and hire folks that are qualified to do the job, right? And that's the hard part. We need, especially with the stormwater regulations, we need to find folks that are familiar with modeling and stormwater criteria, as well as those that are qualified and have certifications to do the building permit plan review. It's not just someone that you just pick up. They've got to learn those, those trades. And with us competing with those folks that are doing project management, building construction, those things, we're having, we are having a hard time filling those positions.
Bobby, you, you and your folks continue to do yeoman's work. Thank you.
We try, sir.
Hey, Bob, how you doing?
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer. Members of Council, it's a pleasure to see you all this afternoon. So I am Bob Montague, Director of Public Utilities, and like you've heard from so many of the other departments today, Public Utilities is not immune. Regina was mentioning that infrastructure positions are particularly challenging in this day and age, and that's kind of our wheelhouse in Public Utilities. And I wanted to share a little bit of information. As you see there, Public Utilities vacancy issue has been growing over the last several years. It hasn't been where, where it is and just stagnant. It's, it's, it's been a discernible pattern for us, and it's really been in a couple of areas, a couple of our divisions are being impacted more so than others right now. If I was standing here a year ago, I would tell you our big issue was in engineering. It's been unbelievable. I think it's more good fortune than anything else that we've been able to make good progress in our engineering division, and that's one of our better divisions right now in terms of staffing with a 9% vacancy rate. But our business division is, is a different story, and that's where our customer service and call center billing operations are. Right now, we've got a 25% vacancy rate in the business division. And so recruiting is one thing, retention is another, and I wanted to share with you some other telling data that I, that I think is pertinent here. Though we, we do have a 25% vacancy rate in the business division, I think it's also important to note that of the employees that we do have currently on staff in the business division, 56% of them have less than five years of service with the city, and that's due to a number of things, churn and the fact that we've just, we've had to hire so, so many new, new people. And that's very unusual. I spent a good part of my career in utilities in the business division, and when I got here almost 30 years ago, the, the veteran presence was very, very discernible within the business division, and it's very different now. It's a very dynamic group, a very hard-working group, but it's one that is really challenging to keep staffed at this point. Then the other division in utilities that's experiencing some challenges right now is our operations division. We have a 21% vacancy rate in operations. And again, if you look at that, that same figure for operations in terms of the percentage of existing employees within that one-to-five-year range of services, we're talking about 35%. And where that becomes significant is, is we really are relying on our veteran presence within, within operations to bring these, these newer folks along very quickly, and they're working really hard to try to do just that. So what are we doing in the interim to address some of these challenges? It's really about prioritization. In terms of customer service, it's really prioritizing what work needs to happen, those turn-ons, turn-offs, those daily things that our customers are expecting. We're working our electronic work queues using a good bit of overtime when we're trying to bring in temps when we can find them to help out whenever we can, whenever we can, and then just reassigning staff based on what the, what the priority of the day is. Same thing's going on in operations. We're deferring some of our routine maintenance, like water line flushing, valve, exercising, things like that that we typically want to do on an ongoing basis are being deferred. And then we're pulling crew members from after-hours crews to help fill out our, our crews that are working during the day so that we're sure, we're assured of being able to respond to our customer requests for services, sewer backups, things of, of that nature. One other concern that I wanted to, to mention is storm response. So that's, that's a liability for us and one that we're a bit worried about with the current level of vacancies that we have. I can tell you, I've experienced more than my share of storms since becoming during the pandemic. I can tell you, I've experienced more than my share of storms since becoming, uh, director, had a major storm. I think my second day as Director of Utilities with Hurricane Matthew. And I can tell you that even when we're relatively well-staffed, that responding to a major storm event wears us out and is quite a, a challenge. It's something that we'll struggle with. I think it'll, if we end up having a, a storm event of significant magnitude while we're in the position that we are in, it will take, um, significantly longer for us to recover the system than what we're accustomed to doing. We have plans to make, uh, better, or more use of, of contractors. We're doing what we can in terms of expanding our, our recruiting and working with HR. We're looking at a couple of our important job classifications to make sure that we're, we're as competitive as we can be and need to be in this, this market. So we are trying to be as proactive, um, as we can, like some of the other directors. I'd just like to end in, um, recognizing the incredible work that my staff continues to do. Our managers, our supervisors are doing an outstanding job of juggling and pulling out the, the rabbits out of the hat to, to make sure that the services are still being delivered, along with our, our newer staff stepping up into roles and responsibilities to ensure that the job is, is getting done. So, thank you.
Most appreciated. Again, tremendous work. Hey Michael.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, members of council. Councilman Branch, welcome.
Very much.
Uh, Michael Kirschhorn with Parks and Recreation, here to continue, uh, the sobering news on vacancies. Uh, so a couple of quick things, uh, just like other directors talked about. Really what's happening right now is, uh, positions that have always been hard to fill, but we've struggled with, but we've kind of got by with. The current situation is just exacerbating that. So currently, we have around, um, eighty to eighty-five full-time vacancies out of five hundred and five. As you can see, that's about a sixteen percent vacancy rate of just the full-time. Uh, but that is uneven across the board. Over sixty of those eighty positions are in Parks and Landscape Services. So these are our entry-level groundskeeper ones and groundskeeper-two positions that we historically struggle with. Now it's just really unsustainable. So, you may be seeing, uh, higher grass out there across the city. We have had some complaints, uh, over the past spring, and that's really due to the labor shortage. Uh, roughly one-third of all the city's mowing is outsourced. And in a normal time, if we couldn't mow it, we'd call up one of our contractors, but they can't get to it either. Sheriff's Office is one of our contractors, they can't get to it. So our contracted, contracted, uh, folks are in the same boat we can. This is leading to, uh, delayed mow cycles. This is leading to, uh, deferred park repairs. Uh, you're talking minor repairs, graffiti, broken fences. We just can't get to it. Right now, we'll go out and we'll mow, and we might not blow off all the grass clippings, because we got to get to the next spot to mow. And so we're getting calls on things like that. We're doing the best we can. Uh, where we're really being impacted in Parks and Recreation, though, is, as you know, two-thirds of our workforce is part-time. Uh, part-timers, uh, across the entire country in Parks and Recreation, part-timers make up really the bulk of our workforce. Lifeguards, childcare, park attendants, all those types of employees. Right now, we have over two hundred part-time vacancies across the department. And that is in some areas just crippling our services, uh, namely in childcare, athletics, um, and in, um, I'm sorry, childcare, athletics, and, um, I'm missing one more. It'll come back to me. Uh, so what we're really having to do is, we can't operate the way we receive. Even though the rec centers opened up last July, our rec centers never went back to their normal hours. We have not had the staff can get back. We're not offering drop-in childcare. We're not offering the level of services that our paying members come to expect. And somebody mentioned this earlier, but this will probably create downstream impacts. Eventually, people who pay for a membership, who, who want to come later in the evening, but we're closing earlier, they will go pay somewhere else where they can go work out, because why pay for a membership if you can't get in and work out, uh, when you're off your job? Uh, so that's having some numerous impacts. So we are doing a couple of things right now. In addition to that, we have just sent notifications out to all the youth athletic leagues. We have canceled youth basketball, uh, for this winter for, uh, anybody over twelve years of age. So thirteen to eighteen-year-olds will have no youth basketball. That's the result of not just enough staff, but the officials didn't even bid on it. They don't have the officials to work for us. So, this is eight hundred kids this winter that don't have basketball. This is where levels of service are starting to decline based on our shortages. Both our contractors and us can't provide these services. Uh, right now, the only way we're operating, operating all the pools, uh, due to lifeguard shortage is because one of the pools is closed for a major project. So the Princess Anne Pool is still shut down. Uh, it's getting all-new LED lighting and the ceiling's repainted. Uh, but when that pool reopens, uh, we will not have enough lifeguards. Uh, what does that mean? That means, again, you're a paying member to a rec center, but you're going to come to your rec center some days and likely have a pool closed, and you can't get to it. Or completely closed, closed on a pole at a certain, or a certain rec center to, again, consolidate staff. We're also doing that with childcare. Uh, this Friday is the last day of childcare, and all four of the rec centers that offer after-school childcare will be consolidating that program, reassigning those staff out to the school sites, because we don't have enough staff to go around. So all those parents were notified last week that this Friday would be the last day. We can still provide them childcare at their home school site, but their recreation center-based after-school childcares, we just got to reassign those staff. So we're in a crunch mode we've really never, uh, seen before. Uh, we're doing all that we can. If you've been to the parks, you've seen help-wanted signs. We have it on the marquees at the rec centers. Uh, we have a, a significant social media presence. Uh, we're putting it out with our membership e-newsletters. Uh, we've been all over online. We've done, uh, pop-up job fairs at Mount Trashmore. Anything we can do, uh, to find the people, but just like everybody else, we're having less and less applicants per position. We're having some times we have to repost it, no applicants. Nobody's applying for a full-time or part-time job, going back out again. We might get four or five to show up. We hire one, but two people quit. So, you, you can't even keep up with, with the churn. Uh, but we're doing all that we can. Uh, we also are looking at currently, right now with HR, uh, boosting some of the hourly rates for our entry-level positions even before the salary survey comes out. Uh, because again, at these entry-level jobs, when McDonald's and Wendy's are paying fourteen, fifteen bucks an hour, uh, we're not competing e- even with that. So, we have some significant challenges. The status quo is untenable right now. Uh, yesterday, my executive assistant was working a childcare site. I have volunteered to work childcare sites at the school sites. We're borrowing Peter to, to pay Paul. We're taking from the rec centers to send them to childcare sites in the afternoon, but the rec centers are short-staffed, um, and that just can't keep going on forever. So, we're hoping for the best, uh, but we also know that there could be future service impacts moving forward until things improve.
Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Regina.
Hi there. All right, we're going to go, uh, pretty quickly through these last few slides, because we do want to leave you with the thought that we are trying to combat some of this, um, as best we can. So, uh, we are heavily on social media, advertising our positions. We have an HR Facebook page. We are on LinkedIn, uh, we are on Instagram. We are out there to make sure that people know about the positions that we have available. Uh, we have, uh, put some strategies on our, uh, dbgov career site so that applicants can, um, have an easier time applying for our jobs and learning about, uh, the positions that we have available. We also looked at some of the strategies that other organizations are utilizing to make sure that they are attracting candidates. So this was, uh, a research from the Manpower Group, and we were pleased to see that all of the things that they were recommending that organizations do, we are doing. So, for example, we have a mentoring program to help our employees succeed. We use flexible scheduling, um, to make sure that, uh, our employees have some flexibility. Uh, we gave pay raises, uh, this year. You, you provided four and a half percent to our non-sworn, eight and a half percent to our sworn, uh, employees, and we're working with our departments to shorten their hiring processes as much as we can. So we're doing all of the things that Manpower was suggesting. I also wanted to quickly go over some of the, uh, efforts that we have implemented recently. Um, so, we have increased the number of holidays and, and we've increased the amount of paid time off for our hybrid employees. Uh, this goes to a CNBC statement that said that, uh, that the types of benefits that are important to women are going to be important because they left the workforce during the pandemic, and they left at a higher rate than men. So, uh, that research, as well as other research, is guiding our efforts at what we try to do to enhance people to come back to the workforce. Uh, we have implemented remote work, workplace. I've mentioned that to you, but we do have employees that, because of the type of work they do, they can't work remotely. Uh, but we implement it where we can. City Council worked with us to implement a maternity parental leave program. That has gone over very well, and is still something that is not common in the public sector. So we do stand out for that. And keeping in mind that our average age of our employees is forty-four, this policy allows those employees to deal with childcare needs, but at the same time realizing that they may have parents who have illnesses and, and need to be off for that too. So, that policy allows us to give the employees that flexibility. We've also implemented pay stipends for certain types of, um, certifications such as CDLs. And we, City Council, you provided bonuses for our employees during the pandemic. So we've done a lot. Uh, there are some things that we're try, we were looking forward to, some things that are under consideration. Um, one of those would be redefining what we call full-time, and that is something that will require a change in city code. So for example, the city code says that a full-time employee is one that works at least forty hours a week. Well, for our exempt employees, we would like to change that definition to say that it is a, an employee who works at least eighty hours over a two-week period. You may say, well, forty and eighty is the same thing. But allowing that flexibility over a two-week period could allow those exempt employees to work more hours that first week, and that second week maybe have more flexibility to have, uh, extra time off if their scheduling will so allow. Uh, another possible code change Eileen spoke to, and that involves shift differential, so we may be bringing something there, uh, to you. We're looking at a student loan assistance program, and we know that the federal government is, uh, looking at overhauling their public sector loan forgiveness, so we're watching that closely, but, uh, that is something that we felt would be a good attraction. Childcare options, uh, that was something that we offered at, at the beginning of the pandemic to help our employees who did not have childcare options because of the pandemic. Is that something that we could possibly offer our employees or candidates for employment to remove another barrier? Uh, several years ago, we removed a barrier to employment by taking off the question on our employment application about criminal history. We felt that was an unnecessary barrier at that time. We want to look at taking that further by considering a program to help justice-involved citizens successfully re-acclimate into the workforce. And we're also working with our healthcare consultant to research possibilities for restructuring our cost structure for our healthcare. So, lots of things that we're considering, lots of things that we want to look into. We just want to put ourselves in the best position that we can to attract candidates. So, in summary, we know that our experience with the worker shortage is not unique. Employers everywhere are having to face this, but we are concerned. We are concerned about the number of vacancies. Uh, we're concerned about the increasing workload for those that remain. Uh, we're, we're concerned about the work hours that, uh, employees are having to work, and we're concerned about the inability to offer that flexibility to some of our employees who cannot work remotely because of the types of work that they do. It's just the nature of that job. But all of this is, we're afraid, causing more stress and more morale issues among our employees, and we are starting to see that. Uh, however, we will continue to look at whatever strategies we can to place ourselves in a position to be successful. So, thank you.
Any questions?
Well, I yield it to Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, please.
First of all, I want to thank Ms. Henley for bringing this up, because this has been very enlightening, and it's like a budget time when we get to hear from everybody. So we get to hear what's happening in the, down in the trenches and how everybody's been working so hard to try to keep our city moving in a positive direction. And, uh, I want to thank everyone that's been working extra hard because they're having to make up for the shortage, so thank you. Um, couple of questions. Bobby mentioned that the STR team moved to Chesapeake. Can you, um...
Yeah, so Bobby, I, we talked about it over the weekend. So, yes, I think on Friday, Bobby got notice that, uh, its employees accepted a position in Chesapeake, in, in Chesapeake. So over the weekend, they tried to counteroffer, and the employees still didn't take a counteroffer.
So, what, did they just offer them more money to move over, or is it because we had more problems here they didn't want to deal with, or do we know?
Com- combination of, it's not most, it's not preferential to do SDR work. They rather do traditional planning work, so it was a promotion and pay increase.
Have we just talked about the four-day work week as, as another attraction?
Yes. So we do have, currently, we, departments do have the flexibility for any employees to offer a four-day work week, uh, just depending on whether or not their organizational workload will allow that.
Right.
If they can structure the work that way. Um, what we are proposing, though, so the Fair Labor Standards Act requires that if you have an employee that is eligible for overtime, that they, if they work over forty hours within a work week, seven-day period, they have to be paid overtime. So, we don't have much flexibility there because of the federal law. But for our exempt employees, those that are not bound by the overtime requirements, that's where we want to open up that full-time definition so that they can flex their time a little bit more over a two-week period rather than being confined to the one week.
So I know a lot of organizations that do that. The people really like to be able to have three days off. And, uh, I guess, hearing about the, the shortage of engineers, have we worked, are we working with Old Dominion? The, Old Dominion's got one of the best engineering schools in the country of getting their engineers to intern with us and come with us. Um, have we done anything? And I have some contacts with the engineering school.
I think LJ and Bob can speak to this, but both you guys, okay?
Yes, we, we do, uh, work closely with, with Old Dominion. We have a good relationship with their engineering program. Um, so we do, um, have both utilities and public works, um, and I believe, uh, planning have, um, interns that come in over the summer. We've have, we have a number of people on our staff who, um, are now members of our staff as a result of those internships and those relationships. We also, over the years, have hosted an engineering, uh, day at our Lake Gaston facility, um, to build those relationships. We also attend, uh, the Old Dominion job fairs, along with another, a, a number of other job fairs to ensure, uh, that we're getting out there and building those relationships.
Well, maybe we might want to sort of make an extra effort, and, uh, because they have wonderful students.
They, they do.
And keep them here, and, I mean, I know, uh, a lot of times, public doesn't pay as much as private, but we have great benefits and longevity that's, that's good for people.
Yes, we, we have a workload that I can guarantee for the next thirty years of anyone's career.
Thank you.
If I may, ma'am, um, I'll, I'll second what, what Bob said. Also, some of my staff would be very offended if I didn't mention that Virginia Tech also has a pretty good engineering program.
Yes, I was just thinking.
Erin and I were going to mention.
But, a- as I mentioned, uh, during my statements, one of the, one of the problems that we have the hardest time with is that second-tier, uh, level of engineer. The ones that have enough experience under their belt, five to seven years of experience, they're able to help us manage a project. Um, we can get some level of support for the engineers coming right out of college. Even that is challenging. Um, a, a lot of those are, you know, making more than, than our, top of our pay band coming right out of college. But, we are having some level of success there. Where we're really struggling, where we're really having a difficult time is that five to seven years of experience, which is what we need to manage a road project, uh, an infrastructure project of any type with, with capability.
And when our bond referendum passes, we're going to need them more than ever.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. Thank you. Mr. Moss, and then Mr. Rouse.
Thank you.
I'm going to work in reverse order since you were the last, but I, I think one of the things that we all need better education on, I know you quickly went by the one slide from the Pew Research Center, which really is the most insightful of all the things we've heard this evening, relative, and with regards to what's the, what's the role of the possible of solutions? of solutions? Everybody's in a bidding war for the same fixed demographic labor market, so I really think that the council needs to be, that's the one, right there. Because if you look at August of 2019 and August of 2021, the labor force in terms of number of people employed is smaller than it was two years ago.
Correct.
Despite, so the unemployment number doesn't give a true picture because it's a different kind of statistics. When you look at unemployment, it doesn't tell you that the workforce that you're competing to buy has shrunk.
That's correct.
So I think for us, when we're looking at the strategies that work, you got to know is, in our regional marketplace, what is really the inventory that's available? Because everybody seems like, I'd say, Rocky, there's one car in the neighborhood and everyone's trying to buy it. I mean, someone's going to be left without a car, a lot of people. So we got to be careful that we're not chasing money isn't getting us the right solution. And I mentioned that because when you look at Pew, or you look at bookings, or people that study these things, what are people in the marketplace looking for? And if you talk to the engineers who work for the private firms, they all want more money today, more money today. They're not looking at, going to be at this law firm for, this firm for 20 or 30 years, so they're getting more money upfront and they're deciding what to invest it in. So maybe the two firms, entities, public and private, have comparable top-line compensation packages, but the discretionary income of one is much higher because they're getting more of their money today and we're offering more money 30, 35 years from now. So I think when we start looking at that, we're going to have to figure out somehow how to address that, because when you talk to young people, and I'm sure you do, those five to seven engineers, well, oh, they got this, they become an associate partner in that small engineering firm. I'm sure many of you know what I speak. So we're not talking the same language. So just infusing more cash into our current structure won't get us the results we want. I mean, people are also looking for, we do, we don't do a lot of reinvestment and residential training in our workforce as a whole. There are certain places where licenses are required, we do, but as a whole, we don't. So I think we're going to have to think really hard, maybe some of the soft things, Mr. Manager, of the things might have a more of an impact, but people don't seem to come to marketplace have a high value in thinking of the net present value of a pension 35 years from now. They're looking at the cash they need today. So that is one different psyche in the workforce. I think you'll also see in the numbers and statistics that the workforce across the country isn't as mobile as it used to be, people willingness to move to take a job, mainly because the spouse often works and the cost of getting in and out of housing creates a barrier. So you got, if you aren't willing to pay relocation costs, you may not take, be able to take advantage of marketplaces that are really out of balance and people might be willing to move. So I would put that on your list as something to look at, and that might be a way to solve some of these other, some municipalities are drawing down because they've got their finance out of order or whatever, might be a chance to, because you're cannibalizing on a national level versus cannibalizing with the region, because that, you're just chasing the same people and you're not really growing the economy just where they work. That's probably not the strategy that we want. And the other one that's keeping people coming back to work, which you did mention here, it's a huge one, is the cost of childcare. Because one, that's a low-wage industry, so they're having a hard time hiring, so as they have to pay higher wages, guess what, that cost goes up. And if you just look at the, and I just mentioned this as background knowledge, if you took what the average household income was in August of 2019, and then you back out the governmental transfer payments that took place over 2019 to 2021, and you back out, discount the inflation during that same timeframe, the average family income has actually declined from August of 2019. It is only the one-time stimulus that has masked a more underlying structural issue, but people well-educated like engineers have lots of opportunities, and I just think they're looking for a different, Mr. Manager, I think when you go out and talk to them, you'll hear this, a different set of work conditions and incentives than our traditional structure offers, and just raising the salary isn't going to get them to come to work. And I, and I don't say that to say we haven't been doing good work, but I just think there's attitudes out in the workplace. I believe I've worked in national security for 41 years, you can't telework that. But, so I understand how that's hard, put you the 80-hour work week. But that's my questions I had for Ms. Hilliard, or just observations to think that this is a much more complicated, intricate, I don't like complicated, intricate issue, because now you're talking about treating your workforce on a market demand basis for the occupation and skills you're going for, rather than this universal approach of one-size-fits-all, and you're going to have this uniformity of execution, because I do not believe you're going to be able to sustain those thoughts of what parity is and what you do here, and I can't work part-time, but they, you're going to have to segment and have very customized, tailored staffing and recruitment strategies for what that occupation and that marketplace demands. And I'm sure when I'll talk later my questions about licensed professionals and just the time that creates it, there's just a shortage. So when is the answer, we have to really restructure the work, and where can you substitute capital for labor, because you just can't buy the labor at any price? But I have some other questions, but I'll defer to other people have questions.
Mr. Rose, would you mind if I let Ms. Henley go real quick first?
He's fine.
Okay. Aaron, go right ahead.
How are you doing, Regina?
I'm fine, thank you.
First, I just want to sincerely thank all of our department heads and everyone who's, who's given, given us an update today. It goes without saying how much I sincerely and truly value our staff and understand being a lifelong resident of our city, just how much it, now and have a full picture, how much it takes to really keep our city going. And that does not happen without dedicated staff that we have, so I just want to truly, again, thank you all so much. And again, I know how very important it was in our last budget cycle to really prioritize not only just bonuses, but increasing salary, because that, that does make a difference, a major difference, which leads me to my, my question. And, and all these vacancies and looking at throughout the city, how much of, of our city's infrastructure plays a part in that? And what I'm talking about is housing affordability, public transportation, and understanding exactly what a new, new workforce, so to speak, a younger workforce is looking for, because they aren't looking for to buy new cars. A lot of, my son doesn't even want to buy a car, he's 18 years old, he doesn't want a car. He wants to move somewhere where there's public transportation. How much of our infrastructure plays a role into hiring and attracting those new engineers and those new workers today who have fulfilled a lot of these vacancies?
Well, it's kind of hard to say, because it's not as if we're the only area that is having the problem. You know, if we were, if we were, we could look at us and say, okay, why are we so different from the others and we're the only ones having this problem, or one of the few that's having the problem? We know that different generations look for different things, and that's, that's true, but there's also a lot of similarity. For example, with the housing, we, we think of the younger generation as wanting affordable housing, walkable neighborhoods, that sort of thing, but there's actually a study out that says, wait, the older generation want the same thing. So, so there's, may not be that much of a dichotomy as, as we may think. I think part of what's going on, and it goes back to what Councilman Moss was saying earlier with people not, maybe not being as willing to move, part of that is because there is the thought that I can work for you from where I am. And so, and that means not just telework, that means from the state where I live, I can still work for you in the state where that position is open. So a lot of that is going on as well. We do have some, some employees who work in other states. It's not plentiful, but we do have that happening. So, you know, it's hard to say what it is that is causing it for us, but I think some of it may be infrastructure, but I don't know that we're any different from, from others.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Follow-up, what did you, I thought I heard you mention the average age of our workforce today.
Forty-four.
Forty-four. So typically, when we hire a new, someone new, what is the average age of our new hires and employees?
I, I'd have to get that to you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Henley?
Well, so much has already been said, and we don't want to go on forever, but I, I would just think that in listening to what everybody was saying from the different departments, we need to have a lot of flexibility in what we're offering. And maybe one of the things that we have tried in the past was to just offer the same thing to everybody to be fair, but it might be that we have to be more flexible to reach different people, because for example, we may need more part-time employees. That may be a way to bring some people into the workforce who really don't want a full-time job, but that may be able to serve some of our needs. And so we may, I think we're just going to have to start looking at a lot of different things, and I'm glad to see that you all were and are, because I think that's probably what it's going to, to take. But I was just looking through this, this phase one of this hospitality study, workforce study that just came out, and of course, phase two in December is when they're going to have some recommendations, but they used a phrase called work-family balance as being the second highest. It's not just the, the salary, but almost work-family balance is one of the issues that is a detriment to people wanting to be hired, and I guess that's telling us that people want to be able to have things that they're able to do with and still have a family life. And I think maybe that's the result of pandemic. And so it, the, the ability to have different hours or different situations, I think is something we might want to have to offer. And so I guess flexibility is going to have to, to come into all of this. But another thing I noticed was this, of course, they were looking at hospitality grant by the education gaps, and this goes to what Mr. Moss was talking about, is saying that we don't have the labor pool that maybe we'd need to have. And again, and this is what Rosemary was saying, you know, as far as partnering more with the higher education facilities to help us train the people that we need. I know we've always had a good relationship with TCC, but we might maybe need to, to cultivate that a little bit more with the other entities with their disciplines like engineering or whatever that they, they have their offering, to offer jobs that we need or training in jobs that we need. And this is where I think this apprenticeship, you know, we, you mentioned it now being used with solid waste, and I think we introduced an apprenticeship with the police. But we might want to do more of that kind of thing to bring people into working in the public sector. I think that's going to be an outreach that we're going to have to address, is people who are willing to work in, you know, in public service, because that's not always where people might want to be. But I think helping to, to increase this job pool is going to be a very important part of all of this. So I, I think it's going to be something that we're going to have to, to look at in a very broad fashion, but I think the first thing that we need to do is send the message to our employees who are with us that we are appreciative of what they're doing and that we're, you know, we're not thinking that they haven't really done an extremely important job for us through all this time, and whatever, if there are things that we can do for our current employees. We used to offer tuition payments for everybody, and I think that was very popular, and I think we did away with that. We maybe have gone back to it in some, some ways, but I think there, there are kinds of benefits that we can offer to our, our employees that we need to really look at. And, and if there's a cost involved, then let us know what it is, and we can, we can see what, what is necessary. But I really think sending the message to our current employees, just hearing about the 911 employees and what they, they have done and are doing and so forth, and it just goes on and on, the necessity with our public utilities folks in a storm. We have these employees all across the organization that are doing just jobs that, that we just haven't even thought of, and they're doing a great job. Everybody is. I don't want to say anyone, because then that leaves everybody else out, but I think just letting our employees know that they're a top priority for us at this point is important. And just bring to us these ideas, and let's see if we can make them happen, because it's, if we're not providing the services to our citizens, if we can't keep those rec centers open and we can't cut the grass and we can't pick up the garbage, our citizens are not going to be very happy with us either. And, and so it's, it just is a cycle, it's a full circle, and, and it comes down to our, our staff. And I really appreciate all that, all the directors have said that you were doing and the things that you're trying to do, and just let us know what it is, and thank you. We'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Belucci, Ms. Wooten, and Mr. Holton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just, I'd like just to take this chance to echo the comments that have been expressed previously in thanking the entire city workforce for their dedicated service over the course of their careers, whether they be short or long. I've had a chance in the two and a half years that I've been on, sitting here as a member of council, to, to get, to get a chance to, to know the, the men and women who served the city at every level. Not every single person, but, but I think a broad representation of the different departments and services, and I've been consistently really blown away by their dedication. And as Mrs. Henley said, it's about public service. I think if you wanted to, if you wanted to make money, you would choose a different occupation, but the people who, who choose to serve our city, all the people in this room and the respective departments you represent chose a different course. They chose public service, and that's commendable, and should never go without commendation and respect and appreciation. So, so let me just say all those things. And the outcomes of all of that work is a healthy, vibrant community that's connected and that we know as a wonderful city to live in, Virginia Beach. But I, I have to say, Ms. Ms. Hilliard, I was struck by something in the analysis and the presentation that came before us today. There were particular focus on a variety of departments, including public safety, human services, public works, and public utilities, as departments where vacancies are at, at their most critical levels and, and where we need the most attention. And I was struck by the fact that those are the exact same agencies that have been, that have staff that have been most vocal about the issue of collective bargaining. And I realize this presentation is about vacancies and it's not about collective bargaining, but if you could go to the slide where you list a variety of, a variety of solutions, including workforce flexibility, proposed solutions, I noticed that collective bargaining was conspicuously absent from that list. And I'm not trying to in any way put you on the spot, and I'm certainly not trying to hijack this discussion to direct it to one about collective bargaining, but I, I don't think it's a coincidence that we have the biggest workforce issues among these departments who are the most vocal about the questions about collective bargaining. And I think we owe it to those workers. We can talk about appreciation and thanks, but I think we owe it to those workers to include that as an alternative, as an option, as a, as one of the menu of, of considerations for how we can address these workforce issues, because I think whatever our positions on collective bargaining as members of council or as citizens or as employees may be, we certainly do owe it to the workforce and to our community to entertain that discussion as part of the, the host of alternatives that could be presented here. And I think that discussion could help to empower and, and, and support the workforce who are involved from those departments. So you don't necessarily need to respond if you don't want to, if you prefer not to, I certainly respect that, but if you do have any insight onto why that matter was not included on the list, I think I would welcome it. But I also respect your right not to answer.
Regina.
Mr. Dehaney.
Councilmember Belucci, understand, understand what you are talking about. I think what I told the staff was to focus on the things that, that we already can do and already have available to us. Collective bargaining is definitely a policy decision of the body, and if council, after we brief council, council wants us to explore it further, we can simply do that if that's the direction and the will of this body. Yeah, so it's definitely not something that we are saying is not. So it's definitely not something that we are saying is not something that is worthwhile, but we are waiting the direction from this body to move forward and exploring that, should that body wants us to do that.
Thank you. And I would respond to that by saying the absence of that on the list should, I think, should be an indicator to us that we need to have this discussion.
Okay, Ms. Wu.
Thanks. Thank you. So, good afternoon, Ms. Hilliard. And certainly, we've heard some very sobering information. Thank you to everyone who brought this information forward. Nonetheless, this is something we need to hear. And going forward, I believe collectively, we can find solutions to these concerns. One of the things I noted as I was listening, and I think has already been said, I'm sure we have employee appreciation programs. I think during this time, more than ever, whatever we're doing, we probably want to ramp up on employee appreciation programs or revamp what we have, embellish, enhance, because we really want to show our employees that we appreciate them. And that's just, you know, that can, I mean, that can be a meridite of, of things to offer, you know, from praise to incentives, several things that we can do. One of the other areas I wrote down, or information I wrote down, is it sounds like we're having issues with, you know, being competitive in the market, then we're also having issues with attrition, and then we're just having issues just hiring and keeping retention issues as well. And so I just wanted to know, I'm just curious, what are we hearing in exit interviews? Are we gathering, or are you able to gather information in exit interviews that are helpful in going forward and retention?
So, we do conduct exit interviews. It is a voluntary process. So, and we offer the opportunity to either submit exit information electronically or to come to talk with us in human resources. The departments also offer, offer opportunities for exit interviews. We don't have, and I wouldn't say a majority of our employees take us up on the offer, but we do have some. A lot of it, a lot of the reasons that are given are things that we can't control, you know, family member moving out of the area. Some things are just more work-life balance. And that's why we are, some of the recommendations and some of the things that we've already implemented, focus on work-life balance, you know, the flexibility in, in scheduling and that sort of thing. But we do hear things about salary, you know, they're, they're able to get a more competitive offer. I mentioned to the city manager, we have had two people leave our department just this week, and at least in one is, is more salary, or there are other benefits that are being offered. We do offer tuition reimbursement. We do still have that program, but some organizations offer more than we do. Or there's just some element that, that they're willing to offer that will make them attractive. Everyone is fighting for the same smaller pool. And, and that's what we're up against. There's no way all of the positions are going to be filled. So, it's a matter of what are you willing to do and what can you do to get the, the small, smaller number of candidates out there to come and choose you.
I'll follow up on that, and thank you for your answer. Just in listening and, and looking across the board, there are going to be people, and we have to find out what's the need, because as was mentioned, everyone's different. Some it may be pay, some it may be benefits, some it might be for some people to have a multicultural organization. There are just so many things. And so I think we have to look at it in a comprehensive way. But we do need to find out what best fits this organization, how we can best attract people to this organization. And that will lead to my, my last point, which is one thing I kept hearing today, is we're doing the best that we can. And I sincerely believe that. I believe that everyone's doing the best that they can to address this issue. But what I would also say is sometimes we may need to have someone who might be an expert, who can come in and look at the issues specific to our organization, specific to different departments, and provide a detailed resolution for what we need moving forward. Might be, it might be interesting to find out what an expert would say to kind of help us address the issue that we're having. Because some organizations and some people are not having the problem. They're retaining their staff. They're retaining good people. And there's a science and a strategy behind doing that. And we just need to figure out what it is for this organization. And, and those are just my comments and thoughts from just listening. Because I do believe there is a strategy and solution out there. Just need to know what it is. But thank you again.
Certainly.
Okay, Mr. Holcomb.
Ms. Hilliard, this is just a, a point of clarification. We heard in testimony from Ms. Lee that it would take 200 interviews to hire 10 people. And I can understand why. They may be competing for one or two jobs, and that's a very difficult job they have. And I'm sure that's the same with the fire department, the police department. They have a lot of applications and very few spots. But if we have 200 people, only hire 10, that's 190 we still have access to that have put in, not for other jobs in the city, but we certainly have their information now. And maybe there's a tool that we could say, hey, if you stay on with us, and maybe we can use you in Parks and Rec, or maybe we can use you in Public Works, here's a job opportunity, and you can build up to maybe be that 911 operator one day, or that fireman or police department. So if you have that high number of people, we don't, certainly don't want to lose them out of the queue, and we need to go to them and say, hey, we can offer you this. I know it's not what you were shooting for, but you land here, and it might help you in a year or so, get where you want to be. And it's just an observation that I had. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
I had, I'll, I'll put my other questions by department and send them in separately, because I know time is valuable, and everyone is, is entertained by my questions, as I would be. So I can see some concurrence with that. But I went and looked, we actually have 7,000 FTEs, I think, full-time FTEs. It looked to me like the average vacancy rate was about 14% across the department, and maybe that's kind of true for the city. That would be about 980 positions, assuming the cost of 60, fully burdened cost of 65,000 employees. That's $62.6 million of under-executed payroll. I would suggest, since the people making all that happen are the employees who are doing the work without those people being on board, I think some portion of that is certainly an earned dividend by the employees who've been picking up the slack, and we need to be thinking about that. That's just an observation. I'm not saying what the right answer should be, but I do think that somehow in there, that is a way of, someone's picking up that slack. And it's probably a lot of microwave dinners, I suspect. And so we got to be back, that's one way to recognize it. But I also think we have to look at, getting back to the point of flexibility, we need to have a more micro-market, because each of these departments that we heard today are micro-labor markets. And you have to really understand who you're competing against and understand what were your competitive advantages. And I only bring your attention, who's seen the latest ad by Amazon on TV? That is an outstanding ad that shows people of all different types of life, all different types of requirements, meeting all sorts of different needs in their private life, and Amazon's message is, we have a job for you. And so I think somehow we have to think about a, a different way of how we talk about our recruitment. And I think you, someone spent a lot of money, and I'm sure Mr. Bezos' team did, to figure out what ad would work and how that looks. And we should, you know, should, you know, invitation is yours for flattery. There's something to be learned there, because we're not unique. So we just have to learn within our, within our culture, because obviously, we don't want to undo that. But we've, we have really got to, and I'm, we really have to reach out and think differently about how we attract it, but also retention. And, but I just bring that observation, because that ad really caught my attention about how they're looking, and they're out there competing with us. I was at a Buc-E's in Daytona. I think I mentioned this before. They had a big sandwich cart out in front of their place. It's a 200 gas pump place with something about the size of Walmart, selling everything you can think of. But their starting cashier job was $16 to $17 an hour for cashier, three weeks of vacation, medical insurance, and 3% match on their 401K. That's to work in retail. I haven't seen that here lately. I've seen like $12 in some vacation. But my point is, the labor market we see today isn't going to get any looser going forward. So I would applaud agility, but I do think we're going to have to be much more, not one shoe fits all, but these micro-markets, but really do look at the people that made that, who got the work done with that amount of under-execution deserved to be recognized.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Branch.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to thank you so much, Regina, for bringing this, and I really look forward to you and the city manager bringing forward some recommendations, so we can actually take some action on some things. And I'd love just a little summary of all these vacancies, so when we talk to our state and federal legislators, they know the situation that we're in, because this is bigger than, than us. I mean, this, it's, they've, they've got to know at all levels of government what's happening, and when they think about what they do in terms of policy that don't have a negative effect on, on possible employees. But I did have one question. Do we have a mandatory retirement age in the city?
No, just for, in our police department, among our sworn officers, yes, but not elsewhere.
Not anywhere else?
No.
Okay.
And sheriff's office, but not, not sworn.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Wilson.
One quick question. This has been a really good discussion, and I think on your list, you've got childcare. And I really believe there's a lot of people, mothers, mostly mothers probably, some fathers who have not gone to work, back to work because there's no childcare. So I would love for us to explore maybe providing childcare. And the other thing that I wanted to mention was, let's look at some things that the private sector is doing. My oldest daughter worked for Google, and they had some really interesting benefits. And one thing that they found, if her child was sick, they would send someone to the house to take care of her child, so she could go to work. It was more valuable for them to have her working than at home, taking care of her child. And I say that's what we do, but there's different benefits that maybe we haven't thought of. Something else is when they were home with parental leave, they gave them an extra bonus for takeout food, because they knew they were going to be busy taking care of the children. So there's little things like that that are more out of the box, that is not traditional. And if we could somehow look at some of what the private sector is doing, there, there may be some things that, maybe some money, but it's more than the money to really try to keep people. And it shows that the caring organization that we really are. So thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Yes.
Just make two comments. Just, there was something said about more recognition, and that gives me an opportunity to just remind you that we do have the Service Awards coming up in December, so you'll be getting information about that. And we certainly hope that some of you will take advantage of being able to say thank you to some of our employees that have been here for a, a good number of years. And I don't want to leave this conversation without reminding you that you did approve for us to have a market salary survey. That survey should give us some information as well about some compensation practices that are out there that, you know, maybe we can consider for our organization as well. So I didn't want to leave here without mentioning that as well.
Good. Anybody else? If I could just say, Mr. Holcomb knows what I'm about to say, motto of the Marine Corps, improvise, adapt, overcome. And I think we saw some startling examples of that with our department heads that came before us, you know, to, today to say what's going on. No, this problem is not unique to Virginia Beach. It's out there. We had, not too long ago, a manufacturer's roundtable. You know, Steel Corporation is having trouble finding people. A lot of the industries are out there. We were recently at a large defense contractor, they're having trouble recruiting people to work onboard ships, because they can't get them to come for the training, and they have to be U.S. citizens and everything. So it's really a quagmire. Coming from the healthcare industry for a number of years, we've always lived with the motto, do more with less. And in the working in hospital environments, a lot of times, we had to go to outsourcing and professional, I don't know, but, you know, once again, I don't know if engineering is possible with outsourcing or some of the other things. But, you know, I'm not going to make recommendations, that's, you know, that's not within my bailiwick. But I can just say that we have to think out of the box, we have to be innovative, and, you know, we are playing with an external and internal market, forces that are really limiting us in so many ways. But once again, you know, the manager and I did the employee recognitions not too long ago. It's amazing how many people have been here, 20, 30, 40. Wasn't there a 50-year person last year? 50 years. So, you know, I think that speaks well to the organization that people, you know, come and stay. But once again, we have our challenges, but I think we got the right people in our management team. And I think one thing we really learned is how, you know, how many departments it takes to run a city, which is a very complex organization that runs 24/7. And I just want to thank everybody and, you know, you know, pass on that this council really appreciates them. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, council, a number of folks recommended that we defer the conversation on the American Rescue Plan Act. Does anybody, you know, object to, you know, moving forward with that? Yes?
I'd want to object to deferring it somewhat, but what I would like to have, I would like a, a complete list of how we have spent all of the money that we have gotten from the federal government through the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Act and so forth, and how we have spent it. And, and, because I think it's really important that we keep track of what we have done and what the results have been, so that, you know, as we go forward with this one-time money, we make sure we're putting it in the right place and, and doing the right thing with it. And, you know, we've sort of had a hit and miss over the last year with these monies, and I would just like to see a total, or, you know, a listing of all of it.
Okay. So Councilwoman Henley, we haven't spent the American Rescue Plan money yet.
Okay.
But we can put together a, a list of what we've done with the CARES Act. But then also, council did take a significant portion of the CARES Act and repay and reimburse city salaries, and then we took it and gave it primarily to the nonprofit industry and also to the EMS. So we could give you a report probably for the Friday package, for the Friday package that details that, Councilwoman Henley.
I see that this, and, and I appreciate this, one of the questions that somebody asked was, list all of the nonprofits that we have given grants to. It's a very long list. And, you know, I think we've done a lot, and I think we really need to see what we have done, and then we can see if there are gaps, or, you know, where we should put these other monies. I think it's going to be interesting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, oh, the one other thing, I think we also had a request for just delaying a bit to 17th and 18th Street Regional Storm Water Facility conversation. Is anybody object? Is that okay too? Okay, at this point, can we go forward with the proposed legislative agenda?
Are we delaying it to get more information? Or just that they don't like the answer?
Welcome back.
So, the purpose of tonight's discussion really was just to take the Friday package item, the items that were listed on the Friday package for just your general discussion. And then I was going to take that, we are going to publish, whatever you tell me to, on the website, so that next week, when we have public comment, which will just be general public comment, and then the following week will be a, a formal public hearing and your vote, because the public hearing, we have to have a formal one, and it has to be a statutory amount of at least 10 days advertised because of the charter amendments that we are proposing. So what I had sent to you on Friday is by no means finalized, that is just for further input. So anything else that you wanted to either add on or take off or adjust? The things that you got on Friday are pretty much just a, a very brief summary. The things that you got on Friday are pretty much just a very brief summary, and so once you tell me to go ahead and develop those, they'll each be like they were every year in the legislative packet, which will be more of a full page where we will say, basically more specifically what it is we're asking for. Whatever the code section is that will be changed, whatever the charter, that will be changed. So that will require a little more research. So that's why I just wanted any general comments that you had in the meantime of, of what, what you wanted me to continue working on.
Okay, open for discussion, Mr. Moss.
Just one thing, 'cause I know it was online, but the fiscal impact will be part of the larger package you're referring to, 'cause I know we had an outstanding request of what would be the cost to run a district special election relative to the charter change. I know that they were, I realize they said they couldn't give an exact, but they would try to give us a rough order of magnitude. I just wanted to make sure.
Right, that would be part of the, the larger, they haven't given that to me yet, but that is one of the things. And then there were several other questions that you had had that are being researched and worked on.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Henley and then Mr. Holcomb.
Well, I, I, I know some of these you just have on here because somebody on the council has suggested something, and I don't understand all of, all of them and what they are. But I noticed that, for example, and it's sort of the, what you said for all of them, that the city council supports all legislation, budget items, and policy changes that will so-and-so, that will support it. I mean, that's pretty broad.
Yes, and so there are pretty much three different categories. One is a category, the first one, where we will be the, you will be the initiator, where we will get a specific delegate, senator, maybe both, to sponsor it, get it, DLS to draft it and put it in its legislation. The second category was more of policy, general policy issues, such as the tree canopies, the, we, there was nothing specific, there are a lot of those, that may be coming up with the carbon, and we did some research on that, and we can refine that further, but there was no specific ask that we were asking the, that we wanted to put in specific legislation, asking that we be allowed to do something, we wanted to support other things. And, and that was another question, as far as all of those items, and you had just mentioned, Mrs. Henley, about some of them were specific, where a certain person would put something in. For the actual legislative agenda, if you wanted to vote on the entire agenda, or you wanted to vote item per item? And I, and that's something that you can tell me however you want to do that. You don't have to tell me now, but...
I just have to learn more about what some of these mean.
Mm-hmm, okay. And, and so that's a good point. If there's a specific one, I think perhaps that council member that put it on may be able to explain it. If it's another one that's not, please let me know what they are, and I can give you the background information.
Okay, Mr. Holcomb.
So is this, so to understand the process, this is not the final, this is not the final look at it, so...
Right.
When, when will we be able to speak to the measures that come up at?
Well, you can speak to any of them now. What is on there now is what I have been asked to put on either by several of you, by one of you, and so that's what I'm gonna go forward with and research and provide more information on tonight. If you decide all of them, I'll go forward and provide you information on all of them. As far as more specificity, research, as Mr. Moss said, fiscal impact, whatever that may be.
Okay, well, there was one in particular, Mr. Mayor and members of council, that, uh, the gentleman-at-large, Mr. Rouse, put in, that I saw in the Friday package that immediately caught my attention, and it was about prohibit public employees to hold public office. And I'm not quite sure if this is constitutional, or would it be a code change? But I think this, regardless of what it is, I hope it's the will of this body to reject this. And, and I think that this is an indictment on 17,000 city employees we just heard about, and saying that they're good enough to cut our grass, and they're good enough to work in our city, but they're not good enough to do this. And so I quickly started taking notes on this, and, you know, we can tell the folks in Public Safety that they can run in and save our lives, but they can't do this. The, the folks that work in the schools can, where they can care for our kids, but they can't do this. And so I, I think by signing off on this code change, if we even present this, this, this is taking 17,000 people, and it's underestimating, marginalizing, and undervaluing them. And, and I want no parts of that, because I can promise you that I hear so much about diversity and inclusion. And diversity and inclusion is also experience and background. We have many different jobs on here. We have business owners, we have lawyers, we have, we have a farmer here, we have a real estate agent. There's, there's a number of people here that bring diversity to this in their workplace and in their experience. So I, I think equality is a human right and not a political issue. And if you wanna run for office, get your signatures, turn them into the registrar's office, and let the voter speak, not the members of this body. And, and that's what I wanted to say about that, Mr. Mayor, but that's the one that caught my eye. And, and I think I know where it came from and where it was directed at, and I just wanted to speak to it. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to address that as well. This particular legislation comes from concerns I hear from the community about conflicts of interest, the potential conflicts of interest, where you have members of this body who the city council dictates their budget, or may have city employees who could present a conflict of interest. For example, you could be a city employee working in numerous one of our departments, and yet you get to sit on this, this body and dictate what that budget would be, therefore present a conflict, a conflict of interest. Also, you know, Mr. Holcomb, that's one perspective of looking at it. You're right, if you wanna run for office, you should be able to run for office. If you wanna be on this body of council, you should not be able, have the perception of a conflict of interest. This matter is clearing up our code where, as you, if you read in the background, it states that this statute addresses political activities by, make sure, this statute limits the ability of the locality to enact restrictions upon political activities of employees when the employees are of duty, of uniform, and not on the premises of their employment, including the list of political activities as becoming a political candidate. After the General Assembly enacted this statute, the city council repealed language in the city code that previously prevented city employees from being candidates for the office of mayor and the member of city council. So what this does is clear up the, in the year 2000, the General Assembly enacted Virginia Code Section 15.2-1512.2, and this statute addresses that. And so this is to clear up that code. Mr. Holcomb, I'm sorry if you feel offended by it.
Yeah.
But this is the answer to our public about making sure we don't have conflicts of interest on this body.
Mr. Mayor, real quick.
Yeah, okay, yeah, Mr. Holcomb.
Mr. City Attorney, we, we talked about today and addressed these conflict of interests and how it gets addressed, and submitted a letter to get an opinion from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office on that. So the conflict of interest is certainly present, but it's present in a lot of things. And there is a conflict of interest statement that we can, that we can fill out to, to make sure that we're not over, overreaching. And so I just wanted to make sure that we know that.
Mr. Moss.
I will yield to the vice mayor chief.
Yeah.
This is for Mr. Stiles, and probably Mr. Branch is probably really familiar with this as well. This came up in the 90s with Paul Lantain and...
Jim Brazier.
Jim Brazier.
I was here.
And you were here too, probably Barbara was here. So this is not a new issue, and I think it came up before, and it was dealt with at that time. Can you speak to that, please?
Well, I think the, the introduction that was included in there explained it probably better than I can paraphrase it. There used to be a city council ordinance that prohibited an employee from running for office. The General Assembly changed the law to specifically say that a, a city employee was entitled to participate in political activities, and specifically within the scope of what is defined as a political activity, is being a candidate for office. So the state law as it sits today allows and mandates that local governing bodies allow that their employees to be able to run for office. And so if this body wants to have the ability to go back to the way it was before, then it first has to ask the General Assembly to change the law back and eliminate that provision that was added back in, what was the year, Dana?
2000.
2000. So, so, you know, there's, I, I don't really know what else, I don't know if I've answered your question, Ms. Wilson, but, but that's, that's the history of it.
Well, you did, and I'm surprised too that school boards are not included in this, because they have, would have the same issues we do, but...
I believe they are. I believe they are.
Well, it says mayor and member of the city council.
Yeah, it says in the proposal, in the request, it says, "In the city of Virginia Beach, the governing body by ordinance may prohibit a city employee and an employee of an agency whose budget is set by the governing body, including employees of constitutional officers and the school board, from being a candidate for election appointment to office of mayor and member of city council."
Well, it just says mayor and city council, doesn't mean, say, being a member of the school board.
It just says school board. Am I, am I misunderstanding that?
And it says, "For election appointment to the office of mayor or member of the city council."
Oh, the city council board, yes. We certainly can, can add that, but Vice Mayor Wilson, I just wanna be clear to Mr. Holcomb, this isn't, it's not personal, it's not anything personal, it's, it's a clear clarification of the code, and from the concerns I hear from our constituents about potential conflict of interest.
Okay, well, I think this already been brought up, I, I support Mr. Holcomb.
Hey, I support Mr. Holcomb. Constitutional officers are not employees of the city. Correct? Is that correct?
No, the constitutional officer is a distinct legal entity elected by the public, and, and his employees or her employees are employees of the constitutional officer. Although, this body does provide some funding for those positions.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That's, the issue is, we, like I said in the ordinance, we set their budgets, so there could be potential conflicts of interest about setting budgets for constitutional officers while they're members of this, of this body.
Just because there's potential of...
And, and, Mr. Mayor, absolutely, listen, if it's the will of the body not to accept this in the legislative package, that's, that's perfectly, that's perfectly fine. But I, I will have sponsors in the Senate, as well in the General Assembly, to carry this bill. So regardless if we accept it or not, that's, that's perfectly fine.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if we're gonna take that approach, why are we having a legislative agenda? If, if we're just gonna freelance everything throughout the city? Well, okay, well, how about one at a time?
Well, this approach has been it, because we, we haven't even allowed public comment. And already, you guys already said, well, we're not gonna have it. So my rebuttal to that, okay, if that's the, if that's what we're gonna handle it...
Okay, well, let's move on at this.
Then I have another recourse.
We're moving on.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to finish my point. My point is, as Mr. Holcomb stated, if we're gonna take this approach and not have this in the legislative package, then I have other recourse to get this to the General Assembly. That's fine, you can't have it one way and not have the other.
Okay, you made your point. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's right. I have nothing to add of value, I, I retract my ability to be recognized. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else at this point?
I did.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Sabrina.
Oh, I, I was just thinking, um, didn't we have this discussion in terms of that same concern when a gentleman applied for the, was it Lynn Haven?
It was Kimsville.
Kimsville. And people were concerned that there would be conflicts. This was a real issue. So I'm just making sure that we all, we had this issue, and so it sounds like Council Member Rouse, what he's doing is answering that issue we had with the conflict. That's how I saw it.
That's all, that's how it was presented.
That's how I saw it.
I didn't recognize you, Mr. Rouse.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Okay.
Oh, I think we'll have a more robust discussion about this at a later date, but I just wanna point out, I think, a, a conflict within this proposal, and that is, having a conflict of interest does not disqualify one from service. It's the responsibility, because as we know, we experience a variety of conflicts, and what that does is it compels the member to recuse him or herself from deliberations on that matter. It does not disqualify them from public service. So recognizing a conflict of interest would disqualify almost every member of this body. I haven't had to disqualify myself for a conflict because I work for a museum, but, and, and there may become a time when I do, and I will do the appropriate lawful measure and recuse myself from deliberation on that subject. I would not, and I think it would be in many ways discriminatory, to, to cause a person to, with, to surrender their ability to serve their community because a conflict exists.
Okay, Mr. Branch.
Well, I was just gonna add, I mean, at some point are we going to get a sense of the council for these priorities?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have, I would like to reclaim my, if I could.
Okay, yes.
I just wanna say, from a personal experience, I served 41 years in the Department of Defense. The Congress has said, I can't participate in many things because of appearance of conflict of interest, no ma, and that was certainly constitutional. Nor can I run for Congress, nor can I run for the US Senate, nor can I serve in either of those bodies and be an employee. I only say that not because it's right or wrong, but just to say there is nothing illegal by judicial precedent for those decisions to be made, and the Supreme Court has not ruled that someone has a constitutional right to both serve as an employee and serve an elected body at the same time, and that is a decision of each of those legislatures and states. But no one should be, I've operated under that for a long time, and I, and I know what that judicial precedent is. So what's right is one thing, but it's not unconstitutional for a legislative body to impose those restrictions.
Okay. Ms. Henley.
Well, in looking at this lengthy list, and I think there are other things as well, we had sort of, in the past, recognized that if we were going to be very successful in getting things through the General Assembly, we needed to pick a priority list and keep it relatively small if we were really going to achieve anything. And so, I mean, it, it's great to consider a lot of different things, but I think the reality of what we're really going to be able to achieve, we need to...
Be strategic.
Be strategic with what we, we put in the legislative package, because I think it doesn't do us a whole lot of good to just pile a lot of stuff on and then not get anything through. So I would, that's why I want to understand what each of these things really is, and see which are the things that are going to be most directly involving us over the next year that we really need to, to have in the package, so...
Okay, so with that, Councilmember Henley, if you would just allow me then to take all of those items, put them all into the more lengthier detail, and then send it back out to you all.
Okay, is that good? Yes.
So, we had decided to defer this until, we'll come back after the election. If we did this on the 16th, 'cause I think the night's gonna be really busy, is the 16th gonna be a problem?
So, no, you're correct. I misspoke earlier when I said next week and the next week. Today is the 12th, right? The, and Dana, we just put in the advertisement, next Tuesday is, is just a public comment for, for you really to all get an idea of what the public is thinking. But then we're holding the legal public hearing on November 9th. So, like I said, that next week is really an opportunity for you to just hear, and then at that point you can tell me, get rid of this one, whatever, and then the 9th will be the date where you'll have the legal public hearing and your vote, unless, of course, you, you know, push it out to another date. But just in terms of timing, just so you know, with all of Chesapeake, Newport News, Norfolk, all of our sister cities have not done theirs yet either, we're all, in fact, we've all been texting every day. So we're all kind of at the same, the same place.
Okay, Mr. Joe.
When would the bills be put in?
The, November 15th is the first day that they can, I think it's 14th or 15th, the first day that they can be introduced, but many, most are not. And they have until December 30th for the final.
The reason I ask the question, Mr. Mayor, is in the past, we've taken the opportunity to meet with our legislators and get a feel from them as to what they will support and what they won't support.
Right.
And it seems to me that that might be appropriate here, because there's no point in trying to take bills to the state legislature if we don't have somebody that's gonna sponsor it for us.
Correct, yes. And I've spoken with several of them already. In fact, Elliot Knight called me just yesterday, and he said the same thing. He said, none of us know if we're gonna be here after November 2nd, so it really doesn't make much sense for us to even talk legislation, so he, he talked about some other things.
I would suggest that you and the vice mayor, as we have in the past, set up a time to meet with the state legislature people, invite them to a meeting in hopes that they'll participate and hear what, what the council has come up with, and get a feel for what they might be willing to support, because you're just spinning your wheels. If they're not willing to support it, then you can forget it. Because if you don't have a local legislator... Because if you don't have a local legislator, one of your legislators introducing the bill, it's not going to happen.
That's good advice, good advice.
Yeah, but you know, there's, we got the elections coming up and we're not sure of the outcomes and, you know, before we move forward, you know, thank. Anyone else at this point? Yep, Mr. Duhaney.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Count, Mr. Mayor, members of council, before you adjourn, Mr. Mayor, we need to get some guidance. So the cadence that we had for the American Rescue Plan was to bring the ordinance for it next week. I'm assuming that it's too early and council's not ready. The concern I want to let council know is that a lot of those projects are construction-related and ARPA funds have a timeline on them. And if we delay, we probably could still meet the timeline, but the more and more we delay, the less, the less clearance we give and guidance we give Public Works to get it out, move in, so that they can get the contracts out and let it, so they can get contractors going.
Yeah, we'll make it a short, though, like.
November 9th.
November 9th.
My only, my only thought process, and I'm not trying to say what the answer should be, but if our differences of what we're trying to deal with is not those segments, which I believe was the $37 million, was that about?
Probably about 44 for stormwater, 44, 45. And then also probably about another 30 when you consider recreation and HVAC.
There was this two blocks. If, if there is consensus on those two blocks, and I'd like to think that there is, could we not move forward with the two things which we all know we, we want to do? And then deal with the other pieces that we want to have some negotiation about, be decided on the 9th so that we, we pull the schedule to the much we can to the left and not take execution risk?
Okay.
That we can do that.
I can work with that. So we'll send, we'll work with the Law Department to adjust the ordinance and then we'll send in the Friday package clarity on what exactly we're including. I'm going to take a guess, I think I know what you're talking about and we can get it done that way. Thank you, council, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Good idea.
Yes, Ms. Henley.
Last Thursday evening at the transition area ITA meeting, we heard an extremely good presentation by CJ Bodnar and Terry Utterback, Tony Utterback, about the city's modeling program and the master stormwater program and how they come together to help us determine what projects we are going to have and how we're going to spend the money. And I've asked if we could have that briefing next week because I think it's an extremely important briefing for this council to hear as well as the public, particularly just before this referendum. So I have asked for that for our workshop next week and I think maybe that's going to happen. But we do have this bond referendum coming up very shortly that we really need to, to try to answer all the questions that we can. And I hope we can concentrate on that somewhat next week.
Hey, Ms. Wilson.
I'm sure a lot of you've noticed that we've been getting a lot of complaints about the STR signs, that people are really unhappy with them. I met with the governing affairs of the Realtors last week and there was a lot of complaints and we've been getting a lot of emails. So I was just wondering if we could get some staff members to meet with the Short Term Rural Alliance people and see if they can look at the signs and see if there's a more attractive, appealing sign that they could go along with? Could, could we make that happen?
Councilman, Vice Mayor, apologies. Vice Mayor, we'll, I'll, I'll get with staff and then we'll figure out a way to have a conversation with them.
There's a lot of unhappy people with those signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, thank you all very much. We are adjourned.